Good morning, everyone. Our guests that's here in the gallery. My name is Crystal and Curly, speaker of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. My daughter is an Englishman. I don't know the language. I don't know the language. And we're going to be here. We're going to be here to get committee work session. And what are you not supposed to be? How can you get in here? Today is October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It is now nine oh seven. So I'm going to call this NABICIA ticket committee work session to order at nine oh seven AM. And we do official roll call. And then for there is no form requirement for a work session for our guests and also for our visitors that are here in the council chamber during a work session mode of our committee meetings. There is no form required. And also attendance can be through in person or through via Zoom. So at this time, in person roll call, we do have delegate Dr. Andy Nez. And also myself and staff, if you could go through the Zoom guest listing, if any of other colleagues are also on the call. Okay, we do have delegate Nathan Nota, who is joining us via Zoom. Okay, and then for the record, we will keep track of our roll call here. So once a delegate does join us or joins us via Zoom, we'll make sure to state that. And at this time invocation, delegate Dr. Andy Nez, can you provide our invocation this morning?
I'm going to show you. I don't know. I don't know staff and everyone online. I don't know. 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 In the people's chambers, so welcome. I'm joined by Commander Williams as well as Commander from Tohajalee.
Gilbert.
Gilbert Platero. Thank you. So thank you. I don't know. 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 I don't know to our Vietnam veterans as well. Welcome home. Do you see a bin of arts? Is it a sort of zenbei? I don't know. Do you know? 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 Do you know?
Okay, thank you, Delegate Dr. Andy Nez, for that beautiful invocation this morning. And again, for roll call, we do have Delegate Lester Yasi, who has joined us here in person. So at this time, colleagues, I'm going to open up the floor for any recognition of guests or visiting officials. Okay, and thank you for all that is joining us via Zoom. Again, this is an open meeting, so anyone is more than welcome to participate in this work session. And again, we do have Delegate Dr. Our Delegate Dr. Andy Nez and Delegate Lester Yasi, and also Delegate Nathan Nota, who is joining us. And we'll go down to number three, work session overview, the purpose of this work session. So we do have legislation zero one six eight dash two five. It is an action relating to the Law and Order Committee, Health Education Human Services Committee, NABICIA Ticket Committee, and Navajo Nation Council. The amending the Navajo Nation Veterans Act of Title, Navajo Nation Code Title Two Subsection One Zero Three Two Through One Zero Thirty-Six, relating to the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration and Veterans Advisory Council, and establishing agency veteran organization and chapter veteran organizations. And the presenters here today is the primary sponsor, Delegate Dr. Andy Nez. And staff, if you could, it's not included here on the agenda, but the exact wording or the tabling referral motion that was made to bring this legislation for a work session. Thank you, staff. And staff that made me aware that this legislation, it did not have a motion to refer or a motion to table. It was a directive to provide a further discussion on this legislation. So at this time, I would have Delegate Dr. Andy Nez join me here at the presenters' table and then provide an overview and also the update on where this legislation is at.
Good morning, Yate. I've been everybody. The legislation one sixty-eight twenty-five. It is amending the Navajo Nation Veterans Act that to Navajo Nation Council Subsections Ten Thirty-two to Ten Thirty-six, relating to the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration and Veterans Advisory Council, and establishing agency veterans organization and chapter veterans organization. I call. Now, can I say that I think that I don't know the language as an agency? I don't know. 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 I call. I don't know. 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 I call. I don't know. 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 There's a growing concern about our chapter veterans organizations and agency veterans organizations. And then the thing that I've learned is that they are not codified in Navajo Nation law. I call. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. This is a. I don't know. 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 As Gold Star Parents. I don't know. 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 Our surviving spouse that they're cleaning. I don't know. Do I? I don't know. Do I? I don't know. 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 Do I? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. They have their preceding plan of operations to function as an organization. I call. I call. I don't know. I don't know. Case. I don't know. 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 They push in advocacy in different ways, from our eastern relatives to our central, western, Fort Defiance, northern. I call. I don't know. 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 I call. I call. I call. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Do I? I don't know. 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 And understanding the dynamics with our veterans organizations as chapters and as agencies. And this legislation is to codify the chapters and agencies because of their unique statuses within our three respective states, within their agencies, within their own respective demographics. And I'm going to go through the legislation and what it entails. And the reason it's simultaneously addressing a, an amendment to the Veterans Administration and an advisory council is because, and I always have to reference my commander at Fort Defiance Agency, Commander Lewis out of Dilcon, who said, "If we're going to assume more responsibility, then it comes with accountability." And to me, that is a direct reference to why we need to hold in NVA accountable as well as the advisory council, the office of the president and vice president, I don't know. I don't know. As the legislative body. And that representation is outlined in this legislation. About eighty-five to ninety percent of this legislation is currently what is out there today. The establishment, the appointments, the recognition, et cetera. And it's, at the end of the day, it's really about codifying and giving them place in Navajo Nation law. And so with this legislation, it did go before the Law and Order Committee back in July. I call. I don't know. I don't know. Order Committee. I don't know. Set out. I don't know. It was passed. I don't know. Just that following week, it went to the Health Education and Human Services Committee. I don't know. Then it was tabled to go out into, go back out to our agencies. And there was no clear motion to table, but I got the reference. And that was really to go back out into our agencies. So prior to the legislation, I shared as much detail as I possibly can on the legislation, and it did pass the Eastern Agency Veterans by resolution. It also passed Fort Defiance, Northern, Central, and Western. After it was tabled, I did go back out into all five agencies again, where I picked up supporting resolutions again from Northern, Central, Western, as well as Fort Defiance. And that was specifically on the legislation as well, citing its legislation number. The latest one was Fort Defiance Agency. I did go out to Kinlachi back on October third, and it was passed at that time. And it also got the support of the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration Director. And it also got the support of the Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council. And last week on Tuesday, I attended the Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council again, and it passed there as well. So it did pass the advisory council twice. So with today's work session, I anticipate, you know, any questions or recommendations, anything that you feel could help strengthen the legislation. I did my best to go out and provide as much information. I know the legislation has been active in DIBS. DIBS is what the Office of Legislative Services tracks our legislation. It's a public website. You can access this at D I B B dot N N O L S dot org. And that's B B as in Bravo Bravo. And it just stands for the Nebbe Behezani. So, and it's been active for about over, a little over three months now. So with this legislation, when you start to, I'm going to kind of just move over directly to where the amendments start. And that's on page three with Title Two, Navajo Nation Government, Chapter Five, Executive Branch, Subchapter One. And that is amending subsections ten thirty-two, Responsibility and Authority. And it's to on number seven. It says it's strike through, provide administrative support and technical assistance to the Navajo Nation Advisory Council. And that's new language, provide written reports to the Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council. These written reports will include demographic data, justifications, and factual determination to support actions taken by the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration. Additionally, written reports are to include any recommendations made by the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration for policy changes before such changes may be formally adopted and enacted. Again, these written reports are subject to accountability measure to make sure that we as lawmakers or any other agencies or programs are recognizing that carrying out these responsibilities as N N V A is inclusive of those recommendations provided through policy changes, whether that's coming from the CBOs, the AVOs, or within the N N V A or the Veterans Advisory Council. And so going off of subsections ten thirty-three, it talks about the advisory council. And so here we talk about establishing it as it currently stands. It is under the executive branch. And so it would go within the office of the president and vice president and that this office shall provide administrative support and technical assistance to the Veterans Advisory Council. And so the advisory council then would be inclusive within the OPVP to ensure that they're also getting the support from the executive's top office. Going on to letter B, that the advisory council is to provide policy advice and recommendations to the executive director regarding veterans issues and concerns, as well as provide reports to the legislative oversight on issues and veterans that Navajo veterans are currently experiencing. Again, this ensures that there is a conduit between the Veterans Advisory Council, the N N V A director, as well as the legislative oversight. And to ensure that that alignment is there for us to. And, to ensure that that alignment is there for us to track and follow and ask the applicable questions as it pertains to this, if enacted. Next to letter C, as in Charlie, the Veterans Advisory Council shall be required to submit written quarterly reports to the Navajo Nation Council that includes a summary of all actions conducted by the Veterans Advisory Council, of recommendations made to the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration Executive Director, to address veterans issues and concerns and activities of the agency and member chapter veteran organizations across the Navajo Nation. Again, that is an accountability measure that we're trying to ensure that these written reports are inclusive of all AVOs and CBOs. Letter D, as in Delta, the Veterans Advisory Council shall have a plan of operation that is approved by legislative oversight, which shall include the selection criteria for appointing members, and outline of the duties and responsibilities of its offers, officers, and enumeration of the responsibilities of its members and objectives of the Veterans Advisory Council to assist in providing representation of the Navajo Nation, excuse me, Navajo veterans needs on the Navajo Nation. Uh, currently, there is an existing plan of operation, um, and again, this allows not only the CBOs or AVOs to adopt their plan of operations. Jo e ni li e kua eki pe ha szi, nihi kodo alhan da it'eh, ajo ha a bi khao so, den do le nahaw konstata. E ajo hut a, alhine kaho nihi salato, e e da, ha i shee ita te lha eki jo e hit a sheen pik eho do, nishin linigi elto, e da t'eh eki alhan da t'eh. Akko, when you look at the plan of operations, it's gonna be really unique and distinct to the respective AVOs and CBOs. But it's also going to ensure that the Veterans Advisory Council also has that. And, for many of you who are, may or may not know, that currently, as of today, they do have plan of operations. Um, and Fort Defiance Agency is the only agency that is inclusive of both their AVO and CVO plan of operations. And everyone else, um, within their respective AVO and CBOs have their plan of operations. Also, uh, going on to letter E, as in Echo, the Veterans Advisory Council shall internally adopt bylaws to govern the conduct of its members, and if necessary, their removal and the rules used for the conduct of its meetings. Again, they have this in place already, we're just trying to codify it here. Letter F, as in Foxtrot, the bylaws and the plan of operation of the Veterans Advisory Council shall be made available to any veteran requesting a copy and shall be available digitally on the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration. Akko la hut a, a den nihi salato di, jin da i kele, halei ha hadla satsos do, hit a e kua eki la, di tsos da no, e e bena kua eki, e ateliya. So that there can be access to any veteran, or really anybody who's requesting the information. And so the membership, um, the Veterans Advisory Council shall consist of, um, two representatives from each agency veteran organizations, one male and one female. Um, and in this legislation, we are removing the Executive Director as a member of the Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council, but is still going to be required by law to attend those meetings. And the reason for that was when we heard a lot of our veterans talk about how, um, there are some concerns regarding, um, you know, having the, the director part of those, part of the council, and so, um, this was a response to say, okay, well, we'll keep it within the representation for agencies, uh, we'll remove the director, but will still be required, um, because at the end of the day, any sitting director of the NVA, um, should be obliged of any conversations that are concerning our veterans. And so, the representatives under two A, on page five of ten, the representatives may not be agency veteran organization officers, but shall be selected from the population of veterans within the respective agency. Representatives shall be registered at a chapter within the respective agency, as well as members of a chapter veterans organization within the respective agency. And currently, I know that, uh, the officers within a respective CVO are those that are appointed to the, uh, Advisory Council. And so, um, excuse me, any, it's open, um, but I know there are some concerns about having an officer of a CVO be participating because that officer is guaranteed to follow any policies and laws or activities with the veterans. Akko e e, um, ike, i gahto lel, ha i shee ita ilha eki do, behesani da t'eh eki do. The actions and activities jo e kodo di, sebka hozan, i sheen banta altehiri benache snihi salato, e e ike, yo gahto, yo ya hunosin do lel. Jo e bena la hut a, ye da ha szi, akko e bena kua eki. Um, again, any amendments can, can occur. Uh, letter B, as in Bravo, each representative must be nominated by an agency resolution, and such resolution must outline the qualifications and highlights for the selected individuals to field a position, this currently happens, um, I did attend the Fort Defiance Agency Council, and they elected new officers. Uh, last month as well, on September seventeen, I was out in Baca Pruitt, I also attended the Eastern Agency Veterans Council Meeting. E ajo elto itan, they did select, um, their officers, and they did so by resolution. Also, letter C, as in Charlie, representatives must provide valid copies of their DD two fourteen, documenting their honorable service and completion of a full-term service for verification and confirmation. A full term of service shall be defined as not being less than twenty-three months of honorable service. And, again, this is documented through the NVA, as many of you know, um, through the Veterans Trust Fund. Uh, part of that registration, uh, they have those outlined in the criteria, so even if you're registered within a respective CVO, you apply for the VTF, that's where a lot of this is documented. Letter D, as in Delta, representatives failing to perform their responsibilities may be removed from their position by the respective veteran agency organizations by two-third vote of the members of the Advisory, uh, Council. Going on to, uh, letter, excuse me, number three, um, and again, this currently exists that there's a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. Um, the officers shall be elected at the beginning of each fiscal year, and the term of service shall be four years. Uh, representatives to the Advisory Council shall serve a term of four years, and may be nominated to serve a second term for a maximum of four years. And, uh, we did propose an amendment during the Na'vi kiya t'eh, um, back on August twenty-eighth. And at the time, when I attended Northern Agency Veterans Administration, uh, excuse me, Northern Agency Advisory Council. Northern Agency Veterans Organization, sorry, I attended that out in Aneth. And, there was some questions at the time, and, uh, we did share that, you know, there would be clarification, um, regarding uh, some of the years of service, as well as the information regarding the removal. Um, so we kind of clarified that, and I can pull up that amendment, um, it didn't pass, it failed at NABI. So, it would have to be reintroduced, um, for council session. And, my goal after this work session is to compile any additional amendments if necessary, and to bring that back to the Navajo Nations Veterans Advisory Council, and potentially propose that during, um, the next council session. And so going on to number four, meeting quorum, uh, shall be defined of, uh, shall be defined as at least six members present, and at least one representative from each of the five agency. No formal action shall be taken without agencies being properly represented. And this was a concern that I found out that the Veterans Advisory Council would convene with their meetings without having each of the, uh, five agencies represented. So this proposed legislation ensures that any, um, meeting conducted through the Veterans Advisory Council cannot be taken unless you have at least a representative from each agency. Jo e kua eki, di behesan be, be, be lata si tli o, e e ya, kodo, um, nezna ltao, e kua eki. Jon e das, then that, that's a kee do lelto, each of the five agencies, e e, they would have to be represented to be able to move forth with any, um, convening. And I think that just makes logical sense. And then as far as the reports, again, that's letter, uh, H, as in, um, hotel. The agency representatives of the Advisory Council shall provide, um, quarterly written reports of the, to the full membership of their Advisory Council. Number two, that they'll provide written reports in person, in summaries to the respective, uh, agency at the first meeting, and I'm kind of paraphrasing here. But number three, the NVA Administration, uh, Executive Director, but shall be required to attend Veterans Advisory Council meetings, and shall provide a quarterly written report. And four, all written reports should be in accordance to two NNC subsections ten thirty-two to B seven. Again, um, having ensure that our CBOs and AVOs are represented through these written reports. That gives us an opportunity as a legislative body to ask those applicable questions, to ensure that any report coming before this body would be able to correspond back to any recommendations, suggestions, um, summaries, et cetera, that are coming out from the CVO level onto the AVO levels. Uh, letter I, as in Indio, um, that is regarding the stipends. The, the Veterans Advisory Council shall meet at a minimum of a quarterly basis and meet as necessary, which they currently do. Voting members shall receive meeting stipends, and travel expense reimbursement pursuant to Navajo Nation laws, policies, and procedures, and available funding with OPVP. Um, and, this again, would be budgeted through that office. Uh, three, eligibility for meeting stipends must be defined into plan of ops, um, approved by legislative oversight and shall include a minimum attendance for entirety of scheduled meetings. Going on into subsections ten thirty-four, um, and this is fully establishing the AVOs and the CBOs. And so, letter A, as in Alpha, um, agency veteran organizations, AVOs and chapter veteran organizations, CBOs are hereby established. Letter B, as in Bravo, the purpose of agency veteran organizations and chapter organizations shall be to provide a mechanism for Navajo veterans to effectively communicate their unmet needs as veterans living on the Navajo Nation, as well as recommendations for the Navajo Nation Government and the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration. To meet those needs and to assist their veterans by effectively and efficiently passing information to Navajo Nation, uh, excuse me, to Navajo veterans as to the availability of potential resources. Letter C, as in Charlie, there shall be five AVOs with one recognized per agency of the Navajo Nation with plan of operations that shall be submitted and approved by legislative oversight. Letter D, as in Delta, there shall be a hundred and ten CBOs with only one recognized per chapter of the Navajo Nation. Only organizations from chapter calling themselves chapter veteran organizations shall be recognized as Navajo Nation approved CVO. E, as in Echo, membership and officers, one, the membership of each AVO shall consist of CBOs based on the chapters, uh, on the chapters within each agency as recognized by the agency councils. Um, E, one, A, each AVO shall have a plan of op approved by the chapter, uh, respective chapter veterans organization membership at a regularly scheduled chapter veterans organization meeting consisting of the member veterans residing within the chapter. And then B, approved plan of op shall be filed with the chapter, the agency veterans organizations, and the Navajo Nation VA, and shall be available to any veteran requesting to review or receive a copy. Digital copy shall be posted on the website for online viewing. Two, officers of the AVO shall be selected by the member CBOs from the veteran population of their respective agency. A, each AVO shall have a minimum of a commander, a vice commander, and a secretary. B, AVO officers shall be elected by popular vote from the veteran population of the agency and may not be an officer of a CVO. C, CVO shall be formally represented at all AVO meetings by either the commander or vice commander of the member CBOs. D, each CVO shall have one vote at any issue that comes before the body to include election of officers. E, officers must possess an honorable discharge and must have completed a full term of service of not less than twenty-three months. And three, the officers of the CVO shall be selected by member, uh, veterans from the veteran population of the respective chapter. A, each AV, uh, excuse me, each CVO shall have a minimum of a commander, a vice commander, and a secretary. Only the commander and vice commander position are required to be filled by veterans. B, officers must possess an honorable discharge and must have completed a term of service of not less than twenty-three months. Four, the officers of the AVO and CBO shall not be selected based solely on gender. However, in accordance with Navajo Nation law, no veteran shall be discriminated in accordance with the Navajo Nation Bill of Rights, one NNC sub subsections one through nine. All CVO meetings shall be held on scheduled dates according to their respective plans of operation, and shall hold a minimum of six meetings per fiscal year. Reports, letter F, as in Foxtrot, the officers of the AVO shall provide written reports and verbal summaries of the activities undertaken by the AVO during the previous quarter. Two, Veterans Advisory Council members shall provide written reports and in summaries of the actions, activities, advisory of the Veterans Advisory Council and recommendations made to the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration Executive Director, as well as any information passed to the Veterans Advisory Council by the Executive Director. And number three, AVOs shall provide a written quarterly report to legislative oversight. And new subsections ten thirty-five oversight just includes that the Navajo Nation, uh, agency veteran organizations and the chapter veteran organizations are hereby established. And, subsections ten thirty-three, under amendments, that this article may be amended by two-third vote of the Navajo Nation Council upon recommendation from the Veterans Advisory Council. Akko diiri ki jo e kua eki, aniri e, minshkhae ki, e kua eki, dishjin de, ah, hut eh, a le den, ka nas linigi. Um, bahaz an nihi salato, akko e ajo e e aitan, uh, khaila laj chesda do, yi ke de chesda do, kua eki di na tsos do, bek eschegi. Benanishigi jo e a aitan, hut a, um, ah, kuich, e, 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 a, hut eh. You have a chapter veterans commander and a vice commander, aro a secretary treasurer who is, um, not required to be a veteran. Akko nihi le bek eralcheh de, e aje, a a hut eh. E, we have a commander, a vice commander who are veterans, and we do have a secretary who is a civilian. And so, that's currently how it is, and a- again, that's just one example of adopting it as, as it is, as it stands today. Aro kodo agency eki elto, e ajo, a a hut a, um, a hut eh, dishjin de. Akko, di khae da, kua eki commander do, vice commander, and then your secretary adopted, having their votes and represented. Um, e kua eki ta ndezido, kua eki benache alhine kaho, e a hut a. E ha sheen, um, di sa be nahwata da t'eh eki do, ha i sheen reports da t'eh eki, e kua eki. Um, bena hatan linigi jo e ajo elto, a hut eh. They have, uh, one vote that pertains specifically to any reports that they receive, as well as any, um, proposed resolutions that they have. And so it's just, again, fulfilling and carrying out those, um, uh, responsibilities that currently exist. Uh, and the reason I read subsections ten thirty-six, under amendments, that this article may be amended by two-third vote of the Navajo Nation Council upon recommendation from the Veterans Advisory Council. And the reason I went back to the Veterans Advisory Council twice was to, um, because by law that some of these recommendations are then, um, provided through the Advisory Council. So, I plan and anticipate going back to the Advisory Council and working with them prior to the upcoming, um, council session. And so, colleagues, um, participants, fellow veterans, everyone who is here in the gallery. Aro a den, alto da isanotsa do sheen la, hut a, da in nihi onal, e kua eki, ahun sogohut a, di sa be nahwata da, ita te linigi. Zero one six eight dash two five two, formally adopt by Navajo Nation Code, chapter veteran organizations and, uh, agency veterans organization. And that's, um, some of the details of what we are pursuing here. E hut e do lel, shada speaker, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Ness, and then I was actually keeping track of how much, uh, supporting resolutions that you do have, and then some of the highlighted concerns that came from the last debate from Na'vi kiya t'eket. So colleagues, if you look in your legislation packet, it is, uh, towards the end, you do have a, an amendment that was presented to the committee, but it failed, and many of the, our colleagues said, we wanna, they didn't feel comfortable, so that did get a vote of seven in favor, ten opposed, with the chair not voting. So that, I just highlighted that as one of the discussion concerns, but we can continue to add on to the listing. But, um, Delegate Dr. Engness, I'll write on the board while you kind of review how much, uh, supporting resolution, because I, I remember that was one of the, uh, highlights from the debate, so we can at least keep that on the board here.
Akko ji, uh, Central Agency Veterans Organization, um, colleagues, there is one attached to the legislation, that's your first one. And we also got a second one, so there's two. Northern Agency, a a hut eh, we have one that's attached to the legislation, and I went back out to Aneth and got the second one. Fort Defiance and the a a hut eh, there's, uh, there was one we amended to add it, um, but that failed. But then I went back out and got a second one, so there's two. Eastern, chiko a, there's one that you see attached to the legislation. Um, I did go back out twice to their Eastern Agency veterans, um, back in July, and then, uh, last month again, but we only have one. Western Agency, we have one attached to the legislation. I did go back out to Cameron and got the second one, so there's two. Veterans Advisory Council, I got one back in July, I got one last week again, so there's two. And Navajo Nation Veterans Administration, although it's not required by law, I did go out and share the legislation with Director Baldwin, that's attached to the legislation, so that's one. Yeah, supporting resolution or letter. And we are encouraging a lot of our CVOs to also pass, because when you are an agency commander, vice commander, you work closely with your respective CVO commanders. And we've encouraged, as I made my way around the different Agency Veterans Organizations, to encourage them to support it. If you don't support it, then you still accompany that with a resolution, that's completely fine. If you have recommendations, those also go along with it. Now, I, I don't have an exact number, but I'm going to estimate to say we have at least seven of them.
Thank you, Delegate Dr. Endiness. And colleagues, I'm going to open up for questions. Is this Delegate Lester Yalsey here with us? Or if there's questions from my colleagues that are joining us via Zoom? So, queue is open right now. Delegate Yalsey?
Yate, yate hepene. Auto inda, huto, naltsos niitato, dijchibaini. Enige, hehela, celayas, huto, aha shinilso, na nishins, ndo, taesita, salalso, naa raaj, benia, huto, naltsos niitatos, ltsos, ibahe. Arindas, inaliyade, bin, Madam Speaker, arindaha, dona, shinhan, dalneshige. Arindah, kune, na hisitani, hiilto, analtso, eh, heh, a, kudo, na, daesunilts, na, do, di, naaltsos. A, shee baanet, ino, leh. Akol, tsahage, eh, ya, a, ad, nle, trahnas, ndale, ade, nihiilna, has, ande. Jo ade, eh, ya, ha shinilso, salalso, eh, lahndatle, do, inda, tlato, trahnas, ndale, eh, belna, annesige. Akwaegi, eh, at, at, slatet, a, nahhot, eh, benach, eh, ya, sadige. Eh, nihiil, ichtani, nal, eh, beishma, has, annit, leh, ni. Ako, shee eh, ya, diha, ap, ya, deo, has, trago, eh, ya, trahnas, ndale, belna, shinich, chedel, trato, bahale. Tsahle, chi, do, kihojiondo, inda, tsachle, do, tsaya, tchot, o, eh, ya, adje, nchi, salalso, eh, analtso, eh, ya. Shee eh, ya, adje, eh, ya, nihiil, bazo, eh, ya, adje, eh, ya, eastern agency, je, tradi, do, ba, alla, eh. Ni, ew, eh, adje, eh, lahnit, leh, ko, heh. Ado, inda, alto, ani, huni, trajo, eh, ya, trato, zado, nihiil, ichtani, ilia, do, na, kid, trad, das, eh, ya. Ade, eh, ya, na, niitato, na, na, ti, da, ha, ap, ya, jo, eastern agency, jo. Akunde, altsage, eh, ya, di, da, the issues, that, the chapters, jo, eh, ade. Slatet, ah, need, a, salalso, eh, a, we, bechina, hu, ilnal, arole, alha, do, leh, jo, ba, ade, ilnil, je, ndet. Ah, do, ah, es, be, ande, kih, bech, eh, hu, ilnet, leh. Ah, do, inda, nle, a, adole, naltsos, be, da, do, ilnil, do, naltsos, eh, huda, traged, a, ha, jo, la, be, da, aliya. Nihiil, salalso, be, trado, nihi, jo, kwaegi, nde, do, ah, si, yo, behosan, da, nde, jo, de, behosan, ago. At, eh, ya, trahnas, ndale, nihiil, salalso, eh, a, a, adje, ilindi, khage, behosan, ago, eh, ilia, di, naltsos, be, eh, do. Ako, eh, te, bahe, ne, sing. Ah, de, inda, altsage, eh, ya, di, da, on, on subsection one zero three two, page three. These written, written reports. Let me go find that section real quick. One oh three, page, page three. Ah, the question, because, this is, ah, let's say, eh, yeah, let me find it real quick. Okay, page three, written reports, di, da, including the demographic data, the justification, factual decisions, and actions taken by the Veterans Administration. Huto, naltsos, nihi, eh, nal, eh, jo, ko, eh, benach, eh, dahosan. Ah, do, inda, di, da, di, da, na, 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 eh, genaltsos, be, ka, san, ndale, oko, eh, be, dahosan. Oh, eh, eh, je, na, eh, di, kit, ko, jet, a, ha, ap, ya, je, nihiil, has, ah, nihi, altsage, eh, ya, di, da, salalso, eh, na, olthaga. Jo, eh, ansa, eh, ya, kudo, ba, na, de, it, it, ah, it, ilha, ande, be, so, ge, bilan, da, izli. Akon, heid, ah, ni, ah, es, alna, eh, eh, ado, bel, olthad, na, it, ah, ya, hotsa. Nde, shee, eh, dan, eh, ya, ah, dihiil, salalso, eh, ni, do, bel, be, dahosan. Ako, ado, dijchir, eh, dan, belas, ni, do, be, so, bech, eh, hu, ilia, eh, ay, yo, ba, oh, be, ni, li, eh, hoto, eh, nihiil, et, ah. Akon, nle, a, trahnas, ndale, belna, has, ah, shee, dekui, eh, ya, naltsos, ge, lahan, na, da, itla. Ako, eh, ko, eh, be, so, ba, no, tagi, leh, eh, do, ba, hle, eh, jo, huto, na, idikit. Ako, in the, eh, ashin, ho, eh, ya, han, eh, gen, hi, che, hunil, it, huto, eh, ya, be, so, na, raaj, eh, ya. Nihiil, ichtani, oltsos, ndo, leh. Ako, halit, oh, eh, ya, di, be, so, at, nda, he, des, oni, ge, di, na, di, sos, zat, be, eh, khage, be, bech, eh, na, di, khage. Eh, di, eh, ya, hoda, zado, tlata, ba, oh, da, nil, na, eh, eh, do, eh, la, eh, ya, ni, na, nihi, dikit. Jo, adje, eh, be, so, slatna, da, ne, deh. Ah, do, inda, belas, eh, huto, beishma, has, ah, naltsos, slatna, do, ltsos, do, benach, eh, oki, eh, ge. Akut, eh, ge, shee, eh, nihi, eh, ah, eh. Ako, you, disc, trust funds, ga, ad, nas, ndali, ado, ado, biga, salni, o, jo, ko, eh, ya. We are willing to more than sponsoring a legislation to request additional funding.
I get it, it's the, it's, it's just an Ola. A D get a yard, um, it, uh, it looks like it's with the agencies that will have a minimum of a commander and vice commander and a secretary. According to A D get a yard, uh, it looks like the commander and vice commander are, are veterans, uh, just need a, a little bit of clarification. I go at the C V O levels, we do have, uh, sometimes there's. Though I see ego, uh, she Aya, nah, I get she had all the years, none of you Aya, about the who you let, let the add a, a, nilo, naso la, uh, uh, nlele, nah, nah, it's China, uh, A, oh, nasna da, it net, oh, A, na, deid list, oh, A, nah, Aya, nad, ah, who I, ah, ah, go A D get about the who you, and then, coi get, uh, uh, K E, na, it's was, nhae K E, na, you, nilly get, oh, A Aya, oh, so la, it's so in line, and the bar, oh, T, uh, coi get, nha, it's, I know, oh, la, get, it's, oh, she, bah, who's on, oh, who be is, so, uh, go Aya, uh, A, oh, oh, L K E, na, it's, oh, one, he, uh, he, he, uh, I, get, he, he, nah, coi get, don't hit, uh, oh, it's, uh, do, she, in, that, uh, uh, K E, get, Aya, did, uh, nat, uh, huh, net, nle, N I get, the Kui, N I he, so la, it's so, in line, it, oh, the Kui, by na, it's so, so, get, N I, who, Dali, A, get, ah, do, in, dan, le, uh, N I, he, uh, N I, he, da, il, they, she, it's, oh, la, it's, uh, it's, uh, and, da, cra, get, it, uh, it's, it's, oh, bad, uh, bad, N I, bad, uh, bad, uh, bad, uh, N I, so, when, or, uh, active, uh, veterans that are, uh, discharged, uh, honorably, though, uh, uh, the ones that are done with their service, if we could also have some form of welcome package back home when they redeploy back into, uh, civilian life, coi get, it's, oh, be, A, dah, so, uh, coi, ah, na, J, na, it's, oh, she, it's about, so, uh, they, uh, uh, you, do, K I, oh, na, it's, oh, so, long, I get, ah, right, uh, hot, oh, the, oh, N I, get, oh, da, K E, I get, it's, K E, that's, so, that's, it's, oh, coi get, uh, la, nha, uh, la, nha, it's, uh, oh, it's, oh, it's, uh, I get, oh, uh, N I, he, so la, it's, oh, I, oh, so, K I, so, did, uh, 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 welcome home packages and redeployment packages, just, N I, get, uh, go, oh, it's, oh, it's, uh, I did, it, it, oh, it's, uh, yeah, so, do, na, I, he, uh, uh, I, uh, I, uh, do, oh, who, N I, he, she, Aya, uh, Yad, oh, L N I, do, uh, A, John, he, na, and, oh, it's, oh, la, do, could, uh, na, no, it's, uh, I get, ah, right, uh, nha, has, Tui, uh, Co Talkers, and, uh, it's, uh, get, oh, the Kui, she, Aya, Jo, bad, uh, that's, uh, get, and, uh, she, in, so, uh, uh, he, N I, it's, and, oh, uh, N I, he, ego, I, ban, see, K I, N I, so la, it's, oh, you, N I, it, uh, oh, I, uh, coi get, na, it's, oh, it's, oh, you, oh, why, he, wins, and, uh, uh, go, oh, it's, K E, that's, oh, it's, uh, I did, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, yeah, so, he, he, uh, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, you have the floor back, ma'am?
Thank you, Delegate Yasi, and then I did put one of your highlighted concern, uh, that you would, I think, for the Eastern Agency Veteran Count, I know we did ask that for a report through NABOKI, uh, ticket, however, we haven't had a chance to have Veterans Administration report to this body yet, so I know there has to be some different approaches, and then, O L C is also aware of this issue, on how we need to navigate that issue, or I, I believe, uh, what, uh, Office of Legislative Council have said was, working directly with either Budget and Finance Committee, or through the Oversight of Health, Education, Human Services, too, so that might be an option, I'll keep a note again, and I'll forward that question again to Office of Legislative Council, if they have an update on that. So I know, it's not, uh, it does have a, a little bit of a factor into, into this legislation, but I think that has to be addressed in a separate legislation or memorandum. Uh, turn the floor back over to Delegate Ness.
Uh, he, uh, chat, uh, uh, could, oh, that, uh, it's, uh, uh, coi get, the, na, uh, they, K I, get, it's, uh, he, she, Aya, could, oh, page three, Jo, A, Ajo, N I, he, so la, it's, oh, cool, it, they, it's, in, get, la, it's, uh, da, Jo, A, coi get, na, it's, oh, so, it's, in, get, A, A, coi get, be, it's, it's, oh, be, be, uh, cha, oh, by, N I, N I, get, uh, coi get, uh, N I, get, uh, cha, la, Aya, could, oh, N I, ha, uh, they, N I, he, so la, it's, oh, dan, N I, get, Jo, A, coi get, ha, she, it's, oh, go, what, uh, the, um, be, it, 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 get, uh, the, the numbers, the representation, that, again, if adopted, would allow us by law to have those justifications, by law would have those demographics, Jo, A, coi get, N I, yeah, chat, uh, N I, he, ha, Z, uh, and, uh, B, uh, uh, go, uh, to, coi get, N I, that, oh, it's, uh, da, oh, in, you know, coi get, J, oh, uh, it, uh, to, uh, N I, uh, go, D, be, has, uh, N I, uh, ya, go, A, uh, who, she, uh, late, uh, do, he, she, uh, that, A, get, uh, uh, it's, it's, oh, it's, oh, that, uh, it's, oh, it's, oh, it's, oh, it's, oh, A, coi get, as a legislative oversight, either with the council, with the Health, Education, Human Services Committee, then that's where we would get the information, and so you shared a, a perfect example, um, regarding the need for us to cite law to get the information, not to say that it can't happen now, but it allows more weight when we cite the law, and being able to allow the, any sitting director to be able to come before their appropriate body for those information, so I wanted to, um, share that. Auto, to your second point, um, regarding the Veterans Advisory Council, so, the Forms one oh five, I know that, um, the HESI Committee, did, uh, uh, big, Aya, day, it, uh, ha, she, uh, late, uh, cool, N I, he, so la, it's, oh, dan, N I, get, Jo, uh, la, N Z, uh, da, B, uh, uh, go, la, A, do, A, boh, N I, Z, uh, da, could, oh, uh, uh, who, it's, uh, 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 they, cool, it's, uh, B, uh, how, it's, uh, N I, da, uh, cra, it, uh, uh, la, uh, la, uh, oh, that, uh, it's, uh, 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 he, uh, she, and, oh, cool, N I, it's, uh, 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 they, go back, and then they come back again, and I've shared with the N N V A Director at one time, that, you know, there needs to be a clear determination on how our veterans are applying, um, and they are working on a digital system, they have, um, a, a system in place now that allows a little more flexibility for our veterans to apply, but my concern is, why are they applying every year? I get it, for the numbers, et cetera, but it's capturing, um, significant information, where if there's a software in place, then it allows just for an update, rather than somebody coming from Tisto, or coming out from Look, uh, Chukai, auto, there's nobody here, they go back, they come back, and that's costly for them, so by the time they get their, um, check, you're really just reimbursing them for gas, coming back and forth, right? So, that's, um, that's a good insight, and certainly something that I know that the N N V A has been, um, progressing, and I do appreciate, um, Chad and N I, could, um, Ms. Baldwin, for also being present here. And then going off to the, um, page eight of ten on the A V Os, so currently, um, with the agencies, you do have your commander, vice commander, and your secretary, but at the C V O level, it's the same thing, but your secretary, um, does not have to be a, a, um, veteran, uh, go, the plan of operations would be distinct, um, and probably in unique ways, and we didn't want to really put too much details, 'cause we all don't like red tape, right? So, we all don't like paperwork and policies and such, and we kind of want some flexibility, so it was really tough to determine, like, we didn't want to say, follow A, B, and C at your plan of operations. Uh, go, N I, could, oh, uh, oh, she, says, uh, no, A, A, oh, ban, says, K I, she, N I, he, uh, J, uh, has, uh, do, uh, as your chapters are veterans, he, uh, she, ban, so, K I, so, he, uh, she, N, you know, coi get, big, end, oh, N I, she, oh, nah, uh, do, you, they, it's, can, Jo, A, could, oh, ban, sin, K I, so, get, uh, A, coi get, be, it's, it's, oh, it's, uh, uh, A, A, yeah, that can be inclusive of your veterans, at the C V O level, at an agency, and then ultimately, that's where we would cite, and part of the, um, amendment that we had was to just kind of clarify, to make sure that it wasn't something, like, out of left field, that wouldn't be applicable, or that would threaten Navajo Nation law, and so, but that's currently how it, it stands as far as the A V Os and C V Os, and, um, I'm just interested to learn more about the welcome home packages and the redeployment packages, um, and then you can just either share more about that, I'm trying to understand, um, the applicability to that, to this particular legislation, I understand there's a lot of different variations, and I've heard it before from agency and veteran, uh, chapter, veteran organizations, um, but the scope of this legislation is really tied into, um, adopting the A V Os and the C V Os, but I understand there's multitudes of concerns coming from our veterans that can help amplify their representation, which I'm all for, learning and engaging in those conversations, um, so I just would like to learn more on, on that, and the applicability there. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Ness, and then we'll go back to Delegate Yasi, if he has any follow-up questions.
Uh, Madam Speaker, I don't have a follow-up question right at the moment, but I'll continue reading through the legislation to go ahead and, uh, note some of the areas, uh, oh, well, actually, let me backtrack, I apologize, so, this, um, this legislation, if we do have, uh, the demographics as far as the data and the, uh, numbers of, of inactive, active participants over at our C V Os, that won't take effect until this legislation either passes or is not passed, but, uh, A, coi get, get, uh, it's, oh, she, it's, uh, I did, uh, thank you.
Delegate Ness?
Okay, I, uh, did, uh, get, A, uh, so currently, Jo, A, I get, A, uh, it can happen, they, they, the justification, the demographics, A, could, oh, N I, he, so la, it's, oh, by, N I, it's, uh, it's, it's real time, it's available, it could occur, did, uh, get, A, uh, Jo, be, like, uh, see, it, uh, A, A, it allows the citation for law, it allows us to hold the accountability measures of N N V A, of C V Os and A V Os, of the entire body that is inclusive of the local level, to the Advisory Council, to N N V A, the legislative, then the Office of the President and Vice President, so it's not necessarily indicating that it cannot happen, this just ensures by law that it does happen, and that gives more weight to amplify what's coming out of your district, or your agency, or the state of New Mexico, as far as our veterans goes, and all of our veterans, really, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Ness, and then for any of our delegates that are joining us via Zoom, do you have any questions?
If not, I do have a question, uh, Delegate Ness, for, this, this is, is on the amendment, I guess, uh, my, my question that's coming from, uh, Central Agency, and also my own local C V Os, is if the, if, if there is an attempt again to have the amendment reintroduced at council level, and if you could help provide, or I guess, if, if it is going to be presented as an amendment again through the council, uh, is there any update that you have gathered from the other agency council, or veteran organization, on the amendment language, or will it just be, uh, taking action just as is? I guess what I'm questioning is if there's any other amendments that will come up.
Okay, Chad, uh, go, did, uh, get, any legislation can, can be amended, as delegates, it's, uh, N I, he, nha, has, la, it's, uh, any legislation that comes before us can, can be amended, uh, go, did, uh, get, A, uh, October, excuse me, August twenty ninth, twenty ninth, uh, da, A, coi get, NABOKI, uh, it, uh, it, uh, uh, go, it, uh, A, uh, the, he, uh, she, um, that, uh, the, uh, the, no, she, says, uh, no, Jo, A, I, I, at that time, August twenty ninth, uh, da, I went out to each agency again, uh, go, it, uh, A, we got clarification, we got recommendations from each of the agencies, uh, go, those were just technical clarifications, though, A, A, uh, it didn't fully do a one eighty on the legislation, it didn't derail, or the intent was not to move in a different direction, uh, go, did, uh, get, A, uh, the amendment that was proposed at the NABOKI, uh, kit, meeting, yeah, da, A, A, uh, that we wanted to adopt Exhibit G from the forty five, um, Agency Veterans Organization, uh, go, A, A, uh, it was, their resolution was passed after the introduction of this legislation, and so we wanted to attach that. Auto, A, A, uh, page four, line fourteen, A, A, we wanted to include the president of the Navajo Nation, to make sure that it reaches that top level, A, A, that was an oversight, but we wanted to include that, auto, um, we try to also give flexibility to A V Os and C V Os, and not give so much legislative oversight, Jo, A, A, do, la, da, do, ya, uh, so, uh, uh, la, A, uh, uh, nle, uh, it's, la, it's, oh, Yeh, had, uh, Z, uh, do, ya, uh, so, uh, could, oh, uh, Yeg, oh, N I, get, that, they, it's, in, oh, be, has, uh, N I, Jo, it's, uh, what, uh, um, they, they call it red tape, right? All that kind of just builds on certain policies, that it just becomes overwhelming, and so we try to give leverage when we talked about legislative oversight. Auto, page seven, line six of eight, um, we, we addressed the legislative oversight concern there, and then we added new language to page seven, line twenty-one, that the Veterans Administration would be acknowledged by its plan of operation, auto, page nine, line ten, that the A V Os shall also provide their written report to the Advisory Council, as well as the Executive Director, and, did, uh, get, A, uh, N I, uh, uh, August, uh, da, uh, go, A, Ajo, Northern Agency Veterans Organization, um, A, A, Ajo, they were having their meeting, uh, go, ah, the, N I, do, la, has, teens, la, it's, oh, long, A, she, she, had, Z, oh, na, they, na, she, they, get, did, uh, get, uh, he, uh, could, oh, two-thirds vote of the Advisory Council, Advisory Council, Jo, A, you're indicating in the legislation that it's based on the two-thirds, uh, Agency Veterans, so, for example, Northern, A, A, she, two-thirds, then, could, Jo, A, uh, NABOKA, as the Veterans Agency, uh, Advisory Council, A, A, Jo, oh, two-thirds, it's, uh, uh, go, A, coi get, oh, it, uh, it's, uh, it's, no, uh, go, he, did, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, the, could, oh, Agency Veterans, that, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, advisory council, that, uh, 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 go, A, A, uh, one of the amendments was, uh, either can act independently, and this can go because of, you know, certain instances that may come up from a veteran, poor attendance, that, A, get, Jo, A, we, they're elected in these positions to carry out roles and responsibilities on behalf of their agency, N I, he, get, uh, we are elected to serve our communities, and if we're doing a poor job, whether we're not attending meetings, um, because we're required to be at least sixty percent of meetings, et cetera, then those types of things can take action, that was one of the amendments, auto, the four-year term, that came out of Western as well, when I, I went out to Cameron and attended the Western Agency meeting, uh, go, it, uh, it's, uh, two years, N I, he, get, uh, if we're elected two years, sometimes two years is not enough time to make substantial changes, and so oftentimes, it takes, you know, a little longer to weave into some of the things that you want to be able to do as an elected official, and so that's where that four years came from, and this, again, came out of the discussion with some of our agencies about the plan of operations, and that's why we included new language, that all plans of operations shall contain reasonable provisions and conform to Navajo Nation norms, basically trying to ensure that no plan of operations are just, like, off to left field, and just not applicable to Navajo Nation law, so that's, uh, the best language that we got out of, so, the reason this amendment failed, uh, NABOKI, uh, it, is because it didn't go back to the Advisory Council, because, coi get, in subsections ten thirty-six of the existing law, it says that this article may be amended by two-thirds vote of the Navajo Nation Council, upon recommendation from the Veterans Advisory Council, uh, go, did, uh, get, amendment, I get, A, uh, A, A, Advisory Council, but, uh, those, it's, oh, so, it's, oh, NABOKI, uh, it's, uh, they, A, A, do, oh, it's, uh, da, by, N I, N I, it, uh, it, oh, na, see, it's, uh, uh, go, did, did, she, uh, at work session, by, N I, K I, uh, go, any recommendations, this same amendment, and anything additional, I did speak with our new Advisory Council Commander, uh, First Sergeant Kyle Lewis, who's also joining us here on the North Gallery, and indicated that I'm gonna have to bring this back to the Advisory Council, to get your blessing, and then bring it back and reintroduce it at the next, um, Navajo Nation Council session, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Ness, for reviewing that amendment that has gone through the committee, so it's good to know, so thank you for that overview, and how this amendment was drafted in the first place, so it looks like there has been recommendations that have been coming from, uh, other C V Os, and also other agency veterans on how to, giving recommendations on how to make the legislation a bit stronger, so thank you for, uh, taking that into account and reviewing that with us, and I'm gonna go back to Delegate Yasi, he does have a question as well, Delegate Yasi?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Speaker, and then also the presentation that we are receiving today, uh, in, in section four, the directives, the one hundred and eighty days, uh, with, uh, A, D, get, that's, uh, the plan, the plan of operations, again, that's, uh, A, there was given a timeline of, of hundred and eighty days, have we collected all those, uh, the, um, the A V Os to submit their plans of operation, A, that's, A, uh, that's, uh, N I, he, uh, N I, do, it's, uh, N I, it's, uh, N I, so, are, are they gonna go back and amend their plans of operations, and then, uh, second question is, uh, here it is, uh, Dr. Ness, section five does cover the effective data, when, um, this code will be, uh, enhanced, pursuant to two, N N and C subsection, two, two, one, B, uh, coi get, A, uh, B, uh, uh, in, uh, if you could also, uh, respectfully request, if I may also entertain a question from one of my, uh, C V Os, one of my, or actually, he's a Vice Commander of the Eastern Agency Advisory Council, newly elected, so, A, coi get, I'm, I sent the information, and when that is prepared, uh, Madam Speaker, and presenter, if I may also be given the, the, uh, the, the floor to go ahead and allow one of our veterans to present their testimony, A, they, I, they, she, it's, uh, and, I, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Yasi, uh, there is that request, if we can have, uh, one of our veteran official officer, uh, chime into the discussion, also having a question, okay, and Delegate Yasi, just to, uh, help navigate the discussion, is there a name that we can hook up to, or Zoom to, or?
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, you asking who this individual will be?
Yes, who?
Okay, uh, the message that I received will be for Mr. Hubert Smith.
Okay.
He is, uh, uh, like I mentioned, the Vice Commander for Eastern Agency, and he did have, uh, some, uh, questions that he'd like to pose to the floor.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Yasi, and then, uh, since we are in a work session mode, uh, it does, uh, give benefit to all of our, uh, colleagues to see other perspective from our veterans, so we can allow that, so thank you, Delegate Yasi, and Mr. Hubert, Vice Commander, Mr. Smith, if you're joining us via Zoom? Mr. Hubert Smith, via Zoom? If you're joining us by phone, you might have to press, uh, star six, uh, we're trying to look through our participant list, too, see if we can find you unmute, or if he can, uh, if you do have a phone number, we're gonna try, you get this unmute, so we can identify you through the Zoom. Delegate Yasi?
Chanel, that, uh, it's, uh, that's, uh, uh, nha, who, he, did, uh, let me go ahead and make contact, and see if, uh, he still will be, uh, providing, uh, testimony to, on the floor today, let me go ahead and call him, and then see if I, where things are at with, um, Vice Commander.
Okay, all right, that works, too. And Delegate Yasi will get in touch with his Vice Commander, so we'll wait a few minutes, and colleagues on via Zoom, do you have any questions for Delegate Ness? Chair Karde, via Zoom?
Sir, Eddie Ness, can you help me, uh, identify, uh, the amendments in this legislation, like, what would be the financial impact, and what funds, uh, would be used to cover the amendments, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Karde, uh, thank you for joining us via Zoom, uh, good morning, and we'll have Delegate Dr. Eddie Ness answer your questions.
Uh, go, she, I, uh, chima, coi get, na, they, K I, get, uh, she, he, uh, Jo, coi get, amendment, uh, they, L I, uh, get, oh, he, uh, she, could, oh, based on, N I, get, she, that's, uh, both, uh, A, A, do, based on, N I, get, both, uh, N I, it, uh, A, A, uh, there's no funds attached, or any, uh, financial, um, associations towards the amendment that was proposed there, NABOKI, uh, it, however, there was a, and there is, if enacted, um, some financial obligations from the OPVP, 'cause currently, when we talk about the, the stipends, um, the goal of this legislation was to get away from using the Veterans Trust Fund dollars to support the officers, rather, there should be separate appropriations to help, that way more of the funding actually goes back to the veterans that, that can utilize these, um, funds, and so that's where the, the financial portion of this legislation comes into effect, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Ness, and Chair Karde, do you have any, uh, follow-up questions?
Appreciate, uh, uh, so, is, currently, so, 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 um, I wanted to ask, then, in terms of the stipends, what is the vision for the Navajo Nation C V Os, uh, currently in Northern Agency, we have, um, some C V Os who are not active, and so what would be the expectation, uh, of the C V Os, and where, what that funding come from, uh, to support the stipends of the officers? I know you mentioned it would come from OPVP, but, um, the source of, of the funding sounds like it would, um, transfer from the Veteran Trust Fund to the General Fund, so I'm just, I just need a clear understanding of what, um, funding, uh, is proposed, and what does that anticipated, uh, what does that look like in the future, and, um, and how do we sustain that funding, thank you.
Delegate Ness?
Uh, go, she, I, uh, coi get, nat, uh, coi get, na, na, they, K I, get, uh, chima, so, currently, the C V Os and A V Os, um, at the chapter level, they do get a, um, an allocation from the veterans. they do get a, an allocation from the Veterans Trust Fund. And when, I'm going to use Fort Defiance as an example. Fort Defiance, as an example, receives maybe $250,000. That $250,000 goes before the CBOs to determine where they're going to utilize those funds. And they use them for hardship, energy, traditional services, burial assistance. And that's how they come together to determine where those funds would go. Now, some CBOs, they set aside, because they meet on a monthly basis, their stipends. And they also budget for the AVO meetings that they do attend. And the AVOs is only the commander or representatives, so not all three officials get paid. CVO, chico eh eh, it's the three sitting officers. Ako, laegi eh ya, they do it every month. An de zido eh, kwaegi, they get their stipends. Laegi eh ya, they do it every other month. Ni hende, ah, what at Red Lake, our CBOs, they determine, if they just do six meetings where they meet every other month, then that allows additional funds to go into Veterans hardship, energy, et cetera. And so those fundings come from the Veterans Trust. Now, your Advisory Council, your 10 membership, the funding currently comes from the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration, and they budget for that. But with the proposed legislation, the projection here is to ensure that the OPVP is the one budgeting for the Advisory Council. And again, that's to help streamline and ensure there's a strength between what the CBOs onto the AVOs to the Advisory Council and then to the President's Office. And that's what the proposed legislation would entail as far as the funding. And I just wanted to share again how currently the funding is also being allocated.
Thank you, Delegate Naz. And back to Chair Karadi, any follow-up?
I do. So if the, I have a specific question in terms of the anticipated cost. If that could be answered, but my follow-up on, is, is the, what type of, I'm having a hard time with what we experienced with our missing and murdered than their relatives fund in the office of the President and Vice President. They took the liberty to not buy, abiding by financial policies. The BIM, the Budget Instruction Manual clearly states that you cannot transfer monies out of a budget that have been appropriated for a specific use to use it for another use, right? Like that's not the initial appropriation. So we saw that happen last week through these series of unfortunate events. And hopefully that's rectified too, and that money is restored back to the four corners came in search and rescue. With that being defined, how do you anticipate protecting the veterans funding in the office of the President and Vice President to prevent future staff and administration from transferring out funding that's appropriated for the veterans and used for their own internal operating system? Thank you.
Speaker's writing on the whiteboard, so it's going to come directly to me. But thank you, Shima, again for the follow-up. So on average, in a year, because the Advisory Council meets once per quarter, they'll have a special meeting, but being that the funds are currently in the INNVA, they allocate about an estimated $45,000, and that includes the stipends, mileage, et cetera. So for example, they had a meeting last week on October 7th, and we had some of our Western Agency, well, actually, we had all representatives, but they came from different parts of the Navajo Nation. So those are afforded to them, and so on an annual basis, it's about $45,000. I understand your concern about the President and the unfortunate circumstance of moving funds to benefit his travel. And so, so it's interesting, because I'm working on amending Title 10 of the Navajo Nation Code, which is the Education Act. And in that, there are some changes that I'm trying to hold off on, simply because I just, and I've said it on record, don't trust this administration, and so I'm holding off on that. So this is kind of the same thing. I understand where you're coming from about, you know, the possibility of, okay, we're going to allow them more funds, but they're going to, you know, attempt to move it or do what they need to do to benefit themselves. But, you know, if the goal here then to is keep it within the INNVA, and we work directly with the INNVA, then I'm open for that. And we just, as part of the amendment, just strike it and keep it within INNVA. And then possibly revisit, if needed, in the future. I know the future is unpredictable with any future administration, with any future INNVA director. But if needed, and I'm okay with that, if we do keep it within the INNVA so that they work directly with that and there's no potential compromise with the actions that are unfortunate by any sitting president. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Karadi, and I have put that on one of the discussion items or concerns for Office of the President, Vice President, budget transfers or reallocation of any veteran funding that is highlighted in this particular legislation. And it can be forwarded over to Office of Legislative Council if that can also be included, maybe through an amendment for this legislation to safeguard the veterans' funding. Delegate Karadi, any follow-up question?
Yeah, I do. So, um, give me a minute, figure, I'm just parking and then I'll be there in person. But if Delegate Naz, do you know the number or what would this budget look like for CBOs moving? Like, let's say, I would just need to know what would be the anticipated annual budget for the CBOs for their stipends in the future, so that we can look at what is that anticipated cost? So that we could, if we're moving forward, there always should be like a plan how to continue to fund, if it's going to come out of the General Fund and not from the Veterans Trust Fund. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shima. We can, I went and grabbed my bag. I did get documents. We probably can run the numbers and have it today, if not before session. But currently, each CBO receives a different number. And let me run the calculations here really quick. So each CBO, to my understanding, as an officer, receives $75 per meeting. Is that correct? For the CBO officers, 75. That's 225 times 12 meetings for the year. That's 2,700 times 110 chapters, and that's $297,000. That's only if each CBO conducts a meeting every month. Some of them don't, some of them do not meet every month, and there are special meetings. Sorry, so, so this 200, projected 297,000 is based on the three officers receiving their $75 stipend, hosting meetings every month. Earlier, I did mention that there are some chapters, some CBOs, that do not host meetings every month. And I gave one of our own, Red Lake, chapter. It can go into additional hardship or energy services for their veterans. Eh, they made that decision. Fort Defiance, chico eh eh, Twin Warrior Society, eh, they meet every month. And it's the largest CBO within Fort Defiance Agency. And so they have no concerns when it comes to participation activities, et cetera. But some of our smaller CBOs, they don't meet quorum. And a quorum is at least seven veterans. And so some of our chapters, they don't meet quorum. So some of this funding is not really used if they don't meet quorum, so they just wait for the next month. But there are special, excuse me, there are special meetings, but there are also agency veteran organizations where they only pay just one, the commander. So it's not all three. All three can go, but it's actually just one that'll get paid, which is the commander. So on average, it's about $300,000, is what I'm going to say. And that comes directly from the VTF, the Veterans Trust Fund, and those allocations that are given to the CBO. Now, if we're just going to keep all the VTF to our CBOs, then we would have to just, every year, project at least maybe, I'm just going to say $400,000 to be on the safe side, that every year on an annual basis. Because the VTF fund, it fluctuates every year, because it's based on, it's a statutory set aside, right, for 4%. 2% goes to housing, 2% goes to the Veterans Trust. So it's not the same each year. So if that's, you know, the will of the council, then I'm open to doing that as well, ensuring that we do have a commitment to budget at least $400,000 for the CBOs. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Naz. And then we do have Chair Karadi, who is here with us in person, so good morning. Colleagues, are there any other questions, follow-up? Okay, Chair Karadi?
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So I'm going to ask a series of financial, technical information. So I see Ms. Baldwin is here, appreciate. Let me be reminded, help me understand, I think I voted for this work session, because I wanted to ask a few questions on the finances, but let's see. I'm just looking for the report on the vote for the work session. Can you help me speak or, oh, directive? I'm looking at the record. So staff, can you help me? Looking at the record, we see a motion to refer, motion to table, NABI, motion to table, Amendment 1. I voted no against Amendment 1, because I believe, in my reading of the Veterans Act, that any amendment should go back at least to the Veterans Advisory. And so, let's see, and the last vote, or, so the last one is the item main, amending the act. So after this vote, staff, on legislation 0168-25, what was the next item? Because I have to explain this at a public level, so I need like staff to also develop, you know, for all of, not only the delegates, for the public, to know, you know, the process of this legislation and to keep us accountable. If we're voting on a directive or a work session, then that should reflect on our attendance. I had a conflict this morning, though. I have an ongoing weekly meeting from 8:30 to 10:00 for our Missing and Murdered than their Relatives Task Force. And, you know, we had a talk with Acting Attorney General and others about an ongoing issue regarding our Tribal Community Response Plan. So that's why I'm late to the call at 10:00, but I want to make sure, you know, because now we have to also, as a council, communicate with our people, like the need for legislative operating funding. And to me, veterans through the public hearings is a top priority for the nation. So I want to make sure that we're also accountable, because this takes time and money to develop work sessions or the directives. So that also should play a part in our decision-making and our best time, because I know that I'm missing the chapter meeting to be here. And so I sent my Legislative District Assistant, who, by the way, we need to have a conversation, because I'm not sure if they actually got paid. So if we could also figure that out while we're here, we're trying to do the best we can. So if I could get that understanding, if staff needs a few minutes to figure that out, that would be helpful. But let me go back to my question regarding finances. So I just need a little bit of history of the CBOs on, when was the decision made to use Veterans Trust Fund money for the CBOs? Like, do we have that institutional knowledge? Or is it just something with who we have now in terms of leaders? I have an echo here. Who we have now in terms of leadership, we don't know why. That's part of this Veterans Trust Fund allocation that the CBOs determine? Because the challenge that I see out there is, we have veterans who apply for funding and then are told their funding has been depleted. So then what are, how are the CBOs monitoring? Because being a CBO and officer, like, you know, you're in a leadership position. So how have passed, like, what is the plan then for previous veterans who did not get funding? And how do the CBOs then work on making sure they're allocating enough funding, right? So as a leader, we always say, we eat last. That should be our teaching, right? So then are we putting enough money into these other entities? And then saying, okay, then we'll fund the CBO? Or are the CBOs getting the first part of the allocation to meet their historic need on when they meet? I want to make sure of that, because what I understand of the Veterans Trust Fund, it is intent to directly support veterans on their needs. Historically now, you know, that changed when the housing came up, and I voiced my concern that we have $40 million for the housing, whether it's in contract or not. But that's how you start taking away opportunities from the veterans themselves to have access to those energy and other areas that they're entitled to through the law. So my hope is, with some of this thought, that I could see that here in the amendment or it's something that we could consider working on after this legislation, whatever comes of this legislation, to address that issue using data. Because I don't think there should be, there should be the priority for the Veterans Trust Fund to provide direct services to veterans who are participants, who are eligible and are saying they need that funding. Because what I see now is, as policies change, and it's not clear to me, because I'm looking for the record, is, like, do they, they no longer have to go to the CBOs to get approval? They could go straight to the agency. And so there's this big rush on October 1st to get the applications in. Because how we know of this is now, because of all of the budget challenges here, veterans were contacting my office and saying, I submitted my application. Now I'm told there's going to be a delay. So we're getting like bits and pieces of how it actually works. Because I envisioned back to when the trust fund was established, that each eligible Navajo Nation participant then has access to those dollars. And I really don't understand at this point why anyone would be denied because of funding issues. issues. I'm going to take it high level. So, today, someone called me Amber Kanasvah, High Level Karadi. I'm fine with that. Because what we have to think about is the impact. So, what we're doing here and how it impacts into the future. If that's no longer the intent, I would like to have that specifically stated somewhere. And I'm not saying that's on you as a sponsor to state, but if that is what the veterans are saying now, our priority is to continue with the housing. We should have that, you know, like an annual confirmation of how they want to move forward with their Veterans Trust Fund. If they want to continue to provide funding for CBOs, to have that, to be reconfirmed. But what I'm reading through their supporting resolutions is, they now want CBOs to be funded through the general funds at the Office of the President and Vice President. So, that's reaffirming through resolution and Veterans Trust Fund. Because if, not saying that it's in this legislation, but if there's a move to increase Veterans Trust Fund, then we have to have that conversation about where all the money is going. And what does that look like? Like, what does an increased allocation to the Veterans Trust Fund do to our budget? Because if we're putting additional money in at the set aside level, that impacts everything else. So, I'm going to go back to this. And that's why I need, I know that we've been having a series of meetings with Delegate Yazi, myself, and you with the Controller. Now that that's destabilized, we don't know who will give us, who will be the subject matter expert when it comes to the Veterans Trust Fund. So, Speaker, that's another challenge when we have this illegal process of removing the Controller is, he was vital in this conversation of helping us understand the Veterans Trust Fund. It's very complicated, and there was different interpretations of how the Veterans Trust Fund is not only invested, but what happens in that investment component that we need clear education on. So, we were planning to have the Controller to start going out to, like, agency veteran meetings to start explaining that complicated nature. Because the last thing we want to do is give misinformation. I think through this budget process, I want to step back and say there was, the intent was to give every veteran a set, or every eligible participant a set amount. And it's still not clear to me why that didn't happen. So, if you have any insight, that would be helpful. But going back to, so, if you're saying approximately 400,000 to cover the CBOs through general funds? Has there been conversation, and I've asked the veterans, if you're asking for more, then who's going to receive less? Have we had that conversation yet with veterans? I think that was very helpful when I attended one CBO and asked them, "Okay, what is your goal to increase the Veterans Trust Fund?" And just for that one individual had, you know, gave me an amount. And so, what we said was, "Okay, here's the amount, times it by the eligible participants according to NVA and NVA's data." And the output was nearly, like, quarter of a billion dollars. So, there has to be some understanding from veterans, from leadership, on what is the purpose of the Veterans Trust Fund and what can it do? Like, is our intent to supplement? Because what I'm hearing from veterans is saying, "Okay, there's inflation, gas prices are increasing," right? All of these areas that are affecting everyone on the nation. And so, if the priority then is to provide direct services, which I advocate for, then we would have to start looking at programs to say, "How are we going to start decreasing programs?" And so, if we start decreasing programs, that means across the board, we need to reevaluate the type of federal or the type of general fund money we give to programs. Does that make sense? Okay. And that's what we have constant conversations at Budget and Finance on. If we increase on this side, somebody has to decrease because there is no revenue increase for the future. If you think for the future, there's no revenue increase. So, we're thinking about what can we do now? Because right now, a lot of our funding, instead of getting like revenue, anticipating like revenue from taxes and royalty, we're just really, according to Controller McCabe, and through the markets and investment team, it's our investment income that's keeping us afloat. And that's very volatile. Like, if you think what's happening on Navajo Nation is embarrassing and what's going on, start looking at the stock market. And the US economy is in a very rough shape because the international investors are not, they don't predict the US economy in the future, which affects what impacts, not affects, impacts our ability to earn on the market. I'm bringing in the market because that's where Veterans Trust Funds are invested and general funds. So, they're both getting benefits from the stock market. So, if we could have a conversation of what that looks like, we could start at least giving some of the programs an idea that with this increase, proposed increase that has been supported and the public hearing support, supporting the veterans, and this is their ask, that we would have to look at programs that we didn't hear about in the public hearings and start monitoring and seeing, are they performing? Or are they padding their budget? We're doing that at Budget and Finance, just looking at their budget transfers. Like, there've already been budget transfers for general funds beyond the Office of the President and Vice President, basically defunding the search and rescue at this time for operating. There's been other programs who have moved money that they have told their oversight and the council that they need and have moved it for like temporary workers. So, there is a clear indication that programs are asking for more general fund than they really actually need. So, that could be a recommendation for the 400,000. And I just want to echo, there was a suggestion at our higher education grant work session because I also asked them, "If we increase," right? Because if we increase the funding for higher education, then who's going to be decreased? They did ask to see some of the performances of programs. So, I'm hoping, working with OMB, we could provide that so we get a better idea of what programs are actually providing the services to the Navajo Nation people. And one of the recommendations was the Government Development Office. So, we could see how much, and with all of this talk with Shirley V. Morgan, we could get clarification. It's my understanding Shirley V. Morgan really just looked at the board itself, and there wasn't so much of a conversation about the office. Because the office also fluctuates in how much. Because I could remember before I was on council, that office was actually used in a way, not for government development, but in what they called the golden goose at that time, because nobody wanted to touch that office. So, at the council at that time, what they did was put all this money into the office because they called it the golden goose. And then that office would help the council at that time redistribute dollars, basically. So, that could be an area that we look at. I'm still concerned about the OPVP's ability, well, not their ability, because the BIM does say you can't transfer money. So, that's a policy and under their Plan of Operation Office and Management and Budget are supposed to enforce, but we're not seeing that. So, the question is, do we need to put it in this law that this money shall not be transferred into any provision? Our challenge here is, you have supporting resolutions for the Office of the President and Vice President. I think majority may have been passed before we realized, within the last 14 days, how the office would respond when there's funding in their coffers, but not for their use. So, I would suggest, I'm moving forward with some Title 12 appropriation amendments, and maybe we put it in the appropriation law itself. If programs like, you know, if the executive director at Office of Management and Budget are going to sign off on these budget transfers, we're looking at as a committee, where's the enforcement? And who is their boss? And their boss is the President's Office. So, there has to be some way to make sure that laws and policies are enforced. I think that's why you see now Chair Parrish, she has a legislation to put Office of Management and Budget under OOC so that there's better controls and enforcement of laws and policies. But it's not now clear because now we have an illegal interim controller who is also not abiding by the budget instruction manual. So, we have this whole system of individuals who are not abiding by our laws. My concern is, I don't want to see that for the veterans. If we're experiencing this now, whether it's embarrassing or whether it's immoral, how do we protect then the veterans' CBO dollars? What we've done in the past when it comes to stipends, something, if we don't want to go the route of decreasing program funding, you can also consider, and we could work together, Shanalet and myself with you, is because chapter stipends in the past, chapters, farm boards and grazing stipends in the past were always underfunded because the executive programs that are supposed to fund them wanted to use money for like their operations. So, we would have to come back and supplement. What we did was Chair Henio last year, and if staff can pull up that legislation, he put some of those stipends into fixed costs. And so, what that does is, right off the top, then we just cover those stipends. And, but those stipends, because the veterans want to put this under Office of President and Vice President, they would still have access to that funding. So, that solves one problem of how do you create and stabilize this funding? So, fixed costs, I would say is the best, in this landscape right now, would be the best way to secure that annually so that, because what we saw from the Office of President and Vice President, and another concern is, they are, so council puts in half of the money basically for chapters. It's called non-administrative cost. I think it was like 14 million this year. We, as Budget and Finance with the council, we increased it from last year. But we saw at the President's Office at the first round, they didn't even fund the chapter's administrative cost. That means all of their payroll were not funded through the Office of President and Vice President's budget. So, my concern is, if you have an administration that doesn't clearly understand what they're supposed to budget for, in the future, what does that look like? So, maybe the appropriation law can also protect the veteran CBO stipend by saying, "We'll allocate that funding if it goes into fixed costs. And if not, then if, or if it's in the OPVP coffers, then they can't move that money either way." There has to be a way to make sure that it goes directly to the veterans. There should be funding that does that. I think it's like Veterans Trust Fund. I don't think they have a history of any other program trying to take money from the Veterans Trust Fund. But now that you're moving it out of NNV, because that's out of HESS's oversight, and you're moving it to Office of President and Vice President, that means it's a NABI committee oversight, and you would have to get the committee to be committed to monitoring those funds, right? Where Budget and Finance Committee is asking all of the oversights to prioritize their program funding just for this quarter so you could actually see where money is going and look at external money. Let's see. So, the other area when it comes to the finance of the CBOs is, you mentioned, and we talked about carryover. So, what are your thoughts on carryover? In the Budget and Finance hearing, there is a provision that allows Veteran Trust Fund money to be carried over, but it gets carried over into one pot, right? So, there was maybe a quarter of a million dollars that was carried over from Veterans Trust Fund. Now that this would not be Veterans Trust Fund money, is it clear to everyone that there will not be a carryover if it's in the Office of the President and Vice President? Or else you would need a 90% approval from council and a president's signature? I just want to make sure that's being considered when we talk about services. Something I've heard from the CBOs is, because the way Navajo Nation closes its books for the fiscal year, Ms. Baldwin, Ms. Baldwin's not your agent, Shas? I'm just, or, okay. So, I think the books start closing, that means like the Office of the Controller, again, another important part of the function of the Controller, is, when do programs start closing their books? And that means, when do they stop making payments? Because we heard this when it comes to burials. So, I just want to see then, for the CBOs, do we anticipate that they'll only be receiving funding like for nine months? Because then they're at the mercy of Window Rock, and we're already having challenges with grazing officials right now receiving their stipends. So, even if we fund it, even if council approves it, it's funded, you know, nobody touches the money specifically for stipends, we're now seeing that Window Rock cannot allocate that funding in time for stipends. So, I wanted to get a better understanding because you'll be relying on OPVP staff to move forward with that stipend paperwork and not Navajo Nation Veterans Administration. So, if I could just get some insight. So, I've done a lot of commentary, but I just wanted you to know as a sponsor and those who are here in the audience and listening online as a policymaker, these are areas that we have to consider so that we make sure, everything that we've learned from the past, we're not putting any additional barriers on the veterans. The last thing I want to do is to put an additional barrier. So, I'd like to have these discussions before it moves forward so that when we get there and it's enacted, it's clear to go, and then the oversights know exactly what needs to be done. And the veterans and the public knows exactly what needs to be done. So, we're accountable. Because sometimes when the veterans do not receive their hardship payments, like as Budget and Finance and I think HESS, then we got to get on the call with the Controller, right? So, are we going to have someone in the Controller's office who is dedicated and understands that to get it done for the veterans? I haven't seen that yet since this change, this attempt to change. And this is why it's concerning to me because it's messing with all of the payment on invoices and access to funding. The other area is then for like Jeremy, is it Jimmy John? Jeremy John? Jimmy, Jimmy Jeremy? Who's the investment guy? Jeremy Jimmy. Jeremy Jimmy then to come back and say, "This is how your investment is happening now in the process." So, I just wanted to give you some commentary because I think that's a critical point that we need to discuss. Because what I'm not sure is if we're moving CBOs out of NVA, and you may have answered this, why wouldn't we give that to the chapters to distribute at the chapter level? And I do recognize that some chapters work better with their veterans and other chapters and their veterans have conflict. But if I'm going back to how funding can be allocated for its purpose, I just wanted to see the pros and cons. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Karadi. So, that was a, we did take notes on all of your questions and concerns, so we can add that to the summary as well. So, at this time, we're going to have Delegate Ness address to all of the questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Arokiha Chama, for those questions and comments. I do want to clarify a few things. First, I don't want any of our veterans to be concerned about your Veterans Trust Fund dollars. That is still going to proceed as is because currently, there is a lot of carryover, and that's why I think the NVA directed a lot of our CBOs and AVOs to, you know, close out your dollars that you were provided under fiscal year '25. And so, it's not that it's not going to carry over or that there's any hindrance on your VTF. That stays the same. This legislation does not change any of that. And those carryovers, I know... And those carryovers, I know there has been discussion and there may be a legislation request, but to allow carryovers for NNVA and for the Veterans Trust. Because I know, again, around like July timeframe, August is when a lot of our CBOs and ABOs try to expend the remaining dollars. And that's important for, I think, any legislator because even for myself, when we look at chapters who also carry over funds. For me, I'm not the biggest fan of chapters who carry over like a significant amount of funds because that tells me you're not providing direct service to the people. So in certain instances, I get it. And so I'm not sure when and how it started where the Veterans Trust Fund dollars, a portion of that was being used towards stipends for their commanders, vice commanders and secretary. Now, on an annual basis, collectively, ABOs and CBOs through their stipends, through their meetings, et cetera, comes out to about 396,000. So I was pretty close with my projected 400,000. That's just to cover just the officers. Now, if we want to do that with general funds, then I'm supportive of that because that allows a mere 400,000 to the VTF for our veterans to utilize. Now, I know NNVA is talking about revamping the current structure of what veterans apply for. So every year in about August or September, when CBOs are given their projected figures, and I'm going to go off Fort Defiance here, for example, cornfields, the projection is 50,530. They take that to their CBOs and they determine who's registered as a veteran, then how does that look like for them? And those dollars, and it's really, it's really a unique situation because like I have an older brother who's a veteran and he's like, I already tried NNVA. I don't want it. Nope, nope, nope. I don't want anything to do with it. Some veterans have that disposition. They don't want to register. They don't want to, they don't want anything to do with the Navajo Nation, right? And, but I was telling him like, just apply because your number actually helps increase for more potential opportunities for local veterans who may be in different situations than you are currently in. So, and it's really through the Veterans Trust Fund, the assistant is to, it's intended to help address the stock gap. It's not a supplemental income. It's to help through various portions of what they're allocated, whether that's hardship, energy to attend a conference, to get services through, for their health or something, right? And those funding, when you go to the CBO levels, that's where they determine. And it's going to look different for every veteran because in cornfields or out towards your area, towards Red Valley, Senaste, out towards Lester's area, Iltcha, Manulito, those that are registered then become part of a formula where they're anticipated to get maybe 1,200 or some of them split it where a portion gets disseminated to every veteran registered for the first two quarters and then they come back for the second two quarters. And so it just looks different for every CBO. And I think that's the part that's just, I'm not sure how to manage. But I know NNVA is discussing, what if it's just the same figure for every registered veteran? So that there's no complexities with figuring out the budget and you're waiting months for reimbursements, et cetera, et cetera. Although I do favor the establishment of CBOs because there's a lot of different activities that some of our commanders really push and advocate for, whether that's with the state, whether that's locally with certain events, whether that's hosting stand downs and other different activities. And so I think it would be great to, again, if the intent is to go with general funds, then I would be full supportive of that because then the funding, the mere 400,000 would stay in Veterans Trust Fund. And the more, and of course it fluctuates every year, but then that would, that's a consistent amount that would remain in there. And if it comes with fixed costs, then that would be great too because I think that's something that, you know, this council has also heard when it came to other programming and some of those instances where they were, you know, seeing financial hardship within their programs at the end of this fiscal year 25. And so for audit purposes, the DD 214, the CIB, the ID, the social security card are what counts towards the veterans registration. And I know there's concerns where, why do you have to be registered to get assistance, et cetera, et cetera? But I think that helps with the formula base and being able to distribute. And maybe what NNVA is proposing to do the software, to do the automation of every veteran, to do the one payout, then maybe that would be a little more beneficial. Then at least we know kind of the projected numbers on a consistent annually basis to be able to provide for them. And so, let's see here. And then I understand your concern about the president's office. So I mentioned earlier, like if we keep it as is, then I'm okay with that. But there are a lot of concerns as well that we've heard from veterans who, you know, they try to advocate with the president's office and how that relationship is unfortunately not there. And there's a concern to have that representation as well back at the Veterans Agency Council. Now, I don't know about other agency councils, but with Fort Defiance Agency Council, I've only seen the president in one of them out of, since I've started. And I've attended every one of our Fort Defiance Agency Council meetings. And so those types of concerns, so I understand the concern over the president and their mismanagement of funds. And so if the intent is to keep it then with NNVA, I'm fully supportive of that as well. Then that guarantees our relationship then with NNVA and being able to follow those funds accordingly. That I'm fully supportive of. So that could be one of the things that we propose to as far as an amendment. I think when we talked about the funds, it was only stipends and when we addressed it with the veterans. And a lot has happened over the last year, right? Or over the last three months since this legislation was initiated in June and then formally introduced in July. From that time to this time, a lot has happened. So there was a lot of uncertainty, but we're at a point where we can make some decisions that were not maybe as applicable a couple of months ago or a few months ago. So I'm all, I'm all open for that, but I just do want to be very clear that the Veterans Trust Fund would not be compromised as far as like the carryover, the budgets going back into their account specifically and then proceeding thereafter. So I just wanted to make that clarity, clarification as well. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Ness. And then going back to Chair Crowdie, any follow up questions?
Yes, so, I'm sorry. I thought the request was to move the CBO dollars to general fund is, oh, it's, so the request is still to use Veteran Trust Fund dollars to fund the CBOs? Help me understand what the plan looks like because it's going to be at the Office of the President Vice President. If I could get that clarified, thank you.
So the OPVP's involvement currently is just the Veterans Advisory Council's stipends. That's all. So the CBOs currently, that whatever the allocation that I read, for example, from cornfields, that's how they determine, they pull from that for their stipends. And every CBO does that. So the funding from the CBOs to support their stipends comes from the Veterans Trust Fund that they're allocated. So that's not changing. That's, it's still going to come from the VTF. But currently, the Veterans Advisory Council's, their stipends, mileage, et cetera, that comes from the NNVA's budget. But OPVP, it's to come from their budget. And that's where, and that's where I think you brought up the concern about the actions of the current president now and how it's affecting and, you know, maybe compromised. That's why I'm saying if we keep the stipends for the Veterans Advisory Council under NNVA, which is a projected 45,000 a year, then we can just keep it as is. That's fine. I hope that provides clarity. Thank you, Speaker.
Let me draw it on the board for you. Let's see. Chair Crowdie? So I'm going to try and visualize this.
So the veterans still want to use Veteran Trust Fund money for their CBOs? Because we had a whole conversation, like, I mean, if they're saying yes, I don't understand why they would say yes, but help me understand this. And I thought we were going to general funds. Okay, thank you.
So the current CBOs, the legislation that was proposed is to adopt them by law. The financial part, if that's something we want to revamp and that's kind of our discussion with Controller McCabe, then we can discuss that. But this legislation is really to just adopt them. But currently, as it stands, that's how they budget using their VTF allocations. And, but there was no question posed to them to say, are you okay using that? But if you're indicating here that maybe in the future, we say, okay, starting fiscal year 27, we supplement the 400,000 so that you're not pulling from your VTF, then we can definitely do that. Yeah.
What are you just trying to do right now? Just the Veterans Council, what's going from NNVA to OPVP? And what's the source of that funding?
So currently, the NNVA budgets about 45,000-ish to support the mileage and stipends for the Veterans Advisory Council and that's 10 members. Now, with the legislation, that commitment has to now come from the president's office, any sitting president. And that's general funds because we allocate, yeah, that's general funds. That's allocated to NNVA to budget. However, if we decide as a body, which I'm fully open to, just keeping it NNVA, then we can do that too. Thank you.
What do the veterans want?
That question has not been posed to?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So if this is all general funds, it's all coming from the same base because NNVA's under executive. So help me understand when you say you want this to come out of OPVP's budget, it's like all the same pot, right? So until we, well, DOJ has different interpretations of base budget, whatnot. But let's say as it is now, executive branch gets their pot. And Office of Management and Budget has said historically, the president has the authority to issue out how they are going to fund executive programs using that pot of money. So whether it goes to NNVA? So you want 45,000 less to go into NNVA and 45,000 more to go into OPVP? Because remember, $1 is $1. So is the intent here to get, to just move that responsibility to OPVP? I just need clarification on what is the intent because I need to map it out in my brain if that's actually going to happen since right now currently, according to OMV, the president can allocate that base amount. So I'm just trying to say, what is the intent?
He could take from his own offices.
Well, that's what he did with chapters. He took 2 million from chapters and that's how he got 3 million more dollars in his office. You have to take from one? Remember how Otto always says, you got to take from Peter to pay Paul? So I'm following that dollar. So let's say it's $1. $1 is in NNVA right now and you want president to do it? Or OPVP, whoever, not just this administration? Like what's the intent there? Do you feel like, is it, so then what I'm looking for is, is, again, is it because of the capacity of NNVA? Like this would lessen their, they don't have the capacity to help support the veterans, ABO right, not, that's agency, Advisory Council right now and then need support of OPVP to issue, process out that payment? Or under the law and in their reading, it should go under OPVP and that's the better place for it? Because again, the oversights change and that's going to be different for, if the Veterans Advisory Council is fine with that, understanding the nuance? I mean, I'm fine with it. I'm just saying, is this the intent and what they're fine with now or what questions we need to ask for in the future? Because I went back to, thank you staff for providing this. Because it's not only, this work session today was not only for this legislation, but it was, it was also for all other issues. Wait, schedule a work session with veterans to address other issues and propose legislation. So I thought this was going to be a full house because there's so many veterans' issues. I think that's why when I, when I think about it, I'm thinking about not only your legislation. So thank you for being patient with me if it's not addressed here, but then we'll have to figure out collectively, how do we work with veterans to address these other systemic issues? If, to me, what I think is an annual allocation like we did for hardship and they just get their money and they decide how to use it. Because not only, I don't understand why this hap, that's why I'm asking for historical because then that makes the Office of the Controller and the program issuing these little baby checks and every check is $50 in administrative cost. So someone's paying for that and it's the nation. So we have to dump more money into the Office of the Controller just to issue out checks instead of just saying, instead of giving you six checks throughout the year, we give you one because you know what's best for you and the intent was to help you as a veteran decide what's best for you, but here's your allocation, right? Because it's not a supplemental. It's not all of these things. So that's what I'm looking at for the future and how do we get there? So I just need to know then, do they want to get out of the oversight? That's fine. Do they feel like OPVP staff will be able to push or the capacity? And that's fine. If you could just give me some understanding, that would help me. Thank you.
So I appreciate the question, the follow ups again. So the only reason of the intent was to, we've heard it out there from a lot of our veterans that they don't feel the support of the president. And so how do we strengthen that potential relationship and that advocacy needed with the president's office? And that's where it was through potentially the Veterans Advisory Council membership because their responsibility to work alongside the NNVA director and then that then goes to the next level to the executive office. So I know that this administration doesn't make it easy to kind of advocate in that way. But when there's a new president come 2027, then that ensures that, you know, then that ensures that, you know, it's something that's continuating, or continuing, excuse me. So that forty-five thousand is actually sixteen thousand if we're just talking about stipends. But the additional funds is because our Veterans Advisory Council does additional lobbying, they do additional activities on behalf of veterans across the nation. So again, the intent is to strengthen that relationship with what we hear out in the communities about veterans being overseen by the president's office. And how do we strengthen that? By giving them an opportunity then to budget and to meet with veterans through the Veterans Advisory Council, because through this legislation, their reports would be inclusive of chapter veteran organizations, as well as agency veteran organizations. And again, like I said, this administration doesn't make it easy to be able to explicitly state that. But if, again, the intent is to keep it within INNVA, I am fully supportive of that, considering this administration. Thank you.
Shash, thank you for helping me understand that. So I'm, I'm just adding more from my own brain. The forty-five is general funds. So I'm putting base budget, because I'll be appropriation law. I think we can start locking in some of these, some of these programs, kind of like what we do with a set aside, but like after the set aside, when we start doing base budgets, because then we could start covering like personnel or stipends if it's under fixed, whatnot. But I just want to go back to the intent. It sounds like the veterans want the president to be more involved. So, you know, like in social media, they say, I'm going to give you five years of counseling in thirty seconds, right? So you don't have to go to it. One thing we've learned is, you can never control another person. So they either want to be involved in veterans' issues, or they don't. So I appreciate the attempt, because what I always think about in my mind, you know, you don't go to Home Depot to purchase a gallon of milk. No matter what, Home Depot, to this point, has never sold a gallon of milk. And so I think if we want to address the veterans' issues, and the, and the issues they want to address to the president, I'm not sure this will work, and I'm going to tell you why. The youth council. There was law, I sponsored that legislation, I don't know, pre-COVID. We've allocated funding every year. And if the, if the office doesn't prioritize it, even though they got funding on all of this, they won't do it. So what I'm looking at, then, is this body, although it's been interesting, this council, because I sat on Hess when we did the Veterans Act. And so I would say, what could be a positive from this is not so much if you think the Office of President and Vice President would be more responsive, but that the oversights change to NABE KETI, where then you have a diverse oversight, and, and then we're able to hear directly from the veterans, or hear directly from the Advisory Council, like how that filters up to them. So, and maybe in the future, now hearing this directly, that this is the intent of the veterans, then it's a good opportunity for the Office of President and Vice President, from this day, from this moment forward, on how they're going to continue to support those ongoing issues, and what that looks like. Okay. Let's talk about, and then where we can ask, like, who do we even ask about Veterans Trust Fund? I, I could, if we could, with our little team here, Speaker, open invitation on Veterans Trust Fund, to look at, I would argue that let's remove, or let's use general funds to help with the stipends of the CBOs as we move forward, since there's support from all of the agencies in formally recognizing the CBOs. Because maybe, I've seen this, like how we give seed money, that maybe is not annually. I think the veterans have been very giving to continue to support their CBOs with their allocation. And so this may be being the, I don't know what year of the Veterans Trust Fund covering the CBO stipends, because we don't have that history right now, but I'm sure someone out there does and is dying to let us know, send us that information. Let, let's, let's make a commitment to use general funds. And that's exactly what we did this year collectively with the three million. We used general funds to help move forward with the, the veterans' count, and, and this year's kind of variables on what that looks like. So I, I think this is a good way for us to say, CBOs have X amount of support. Our intent is not to continue to have Veterans Trust Fund support them, and we can move forward with, with general funds. Would be something if we could work at in the future. So the other area that I wanted to talk about is for the CBOs to be, help me understand through this legislation, where they will be recognized through our law. So it says, according to Navajo Nation Veterans Act, Title II, so we have Title 26 is chapters, Title III is grazing and farm board. So when we talk about agency veterans organization and chapter veterans organizations, looks like it's going to be recognized through Title II, which is fine, it's OPVP, us, and some others. But where do you see that recognized in the system? Where, is it, is it on its own? And it could be just like Title III, you know, or like how we meet with OPVP, Title III, how we meet with grazing, and then farm board, and then Title 26. I just need a clear idea, too, where it stands, because I'm not sure if there was a conversation where they wanted any of these organizations to be under the local governance, like chapters, but understanding there's, we maybe need more time to figure out what that looks like. So if you could give me that understanding, because we're, we're in thirty-plus years of government development. And so I'd, I appreciate you with this legislation. I know it's taken a lot of work, a lot of commitment. But help me just understand what that looks like. Like, what is the outcome for, what do the veterans need from us as a nation to formally recognize our agency veterans organization and chapter veterans organization? And how can we support that, other than just funding? Like, do, do we know what they need? Like, are they filtering in their needs? And then that's getting, that's, that's getting to their, you know, their delegate, or that's getting here to the council floor? Or how can our LDAs can support them? I have, I, I have my LDA have on her calendar and prioritize, for sure, the agency's veterans' organization. The chapter veterans organization, that's where I know it's not as structured. But then what support do they need? Because for chapters, they have ASC. And so I'm not sure if Veterans Administration Office is providing that technical support to the agency and to the chapter veterans organization. So I'd also like to discuss what that looks like, because if it's not created now or envisioned yet, what can we do to support making sure that these organizations meet their needs? Because when, do you remember in the budget process, we had to, that, oh, because that five thousand dollars is also general funds. And that was also a move that we sponsored from Northern, because some were not getting, like, supplies or recognitions, like they felt they were begging the chapter to help support them. So we allocated the five thousand. This is our third year, it's by supplemental. So help me understand, then, with all of those moving pieces, how can we support these organizations to meet the needs of the veteran surviving spouse and Gold Star mothers? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Crady. So keeping up with our notes on here, too, I think there's a lot of reflection here, especially when we're talking about dollars. So I did note that, correct me if I'm wrong, Delegate Ness, for this legislation is proposing to move this only for the Advisory Council in an estimate amount of forty-five thousand to be within the executive office's budget of OPVP. So, okay, that's a check mark that's within this legislation. And again, that will cover ten members, this is only summary, ten members of the Advisory Council, which does include their mileage and stipends. And then for a deeper discussion, the Veterans Trust Fund covers all of the chapters, veterans' organization stipends, and also the agency veterans organization stipends. Together, that amount is approximately three hundred and ninety-six thousand. And then another question that Chair Crady has put on the board is for the CBOs and the agency council or veteran organizations, or what is that carryover looking like? So that would be an OOC, an OMB question. And then is there even that possibility to start looking at, instead of using the Veterans Trust Fund for stipends, if we can allocate that through general funds? So those are some questions that are on the board for those that are listening via Zoom. And we also posed questions, okay, how based, is a deeper discussion on the base amounts? And are we talking about if there's an incident where you take forty-five thousand from Navajo Nation Veterans Administration, then transferring that over to OPVP during the budget? Well, is this legislation going to do that? So that was also a question. And also, so right now, that's where this general funds... Okay, yeah. That was for the gifts and rewards, right? Recognitions? Yeah, that's a supplemental, that's not part of the Veterans Trust Fund, or a part of any stipend money. That was a supplemental that was recognized through the council. And over that, that does generalize, within this past budget, FY twenty-five and twenty-six, included five thousand to each of the chapters for veterans gift rewards and recognition. That was a total amount of five hundred and fifty thousand. Recurring, yeah, okay. Okay, guess what? Another option where we do need to look at is an analysis on that supplemental funding of five hundred and fifty thousand, the benefits of it, or what were the general line items, or things that it was primarily used for at the chapter. So that would take a communication coordination with OOC, and also OMB, to see what it shows direct amounts at each of the chapters. Okay, so we did put that also as a side note. I know it's not a part of this legislation, but the directive was other issues, too. So thank you, Chair Crady, for putting that on the board. And then we'll go back to Delegate Ness, any reflections on what we have been talking about for this far?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the, the rich dialogue here. I know that oftentimes, you know, this is the level of advocacy that I think a lot of our veterans have been yearning for. And so I, I thank my colleagues here, also online, for listening in to the discussion, and also our veterans here. I know we have some folks who have joined us as well. I want to go back to a recent point that Honorable Crady mentioned about the annual allocation, like we did with hardship. And I know through the Navajo Nation VA, that's something that's been considered, and something that I know that has been anticipated to go out to each of our agencies to hear their thoughts on that as well. And through the, and thank you for putting it into perspective as well, with the Youth Advisory Council. I know that I co-sponsored that legislation to move it from executive to legislative, because there was really a lot of inactivity. And it's unfortunate that our youth have been at the, the, you know, the shorter end of the stick, so to speak. And so we certainly don't want that to happen with our veterans as well, but particularly just the Advisory Council members. So it's really just about the ten individuals. It's not about the, you know, eighteen, twenty thousand plus veterans that we have, but only confined to the ten members, and through the Veterans Advisory Council, yeah, Veterans Advisory Council. So that, there is the projection, and that was really just to help strengthen the advocacy that's needed and expected of any sitting president, especially our current president. And I think that, you know, again, if the intent, then, is to keep that with the Veterans Advisor, Veterans Administration, then I'm in full support of that. Now, the, the general funds, a proposed forty thousand to support the stipends of our agency veteran organizations and our chapter veterans organizations, if that is a consistent allocation with general funds, then I'm, I'm supportive of that. Because then it allows our VTF to fully go directly to the needs of our veterans. And our CBOs don't have to pool from that to support their stipends. So that I'm okay with, that's, that's fine. And then through the adoption, so I mentioned that in law, there are no recognition of AVOs and CBOs. It did come to my mind on the initial onset of this legislation, which would carry more weight, Title 26 through chapters, or Title II through Navajo Nation government? And at the time, a lot of our veterans were sharing that they're not supported by their chapters. And currently, a lot of veteran organizations are still not supported by their chapters. Some of them tell them you have to pay insurance. Some of them don't allow them to print simple documents. There, there are these ongoing challenges at the chapter level. So then I told myself, well, I'm not going to put it in Title 26, because that would require fifty-six chapters. That's a possibility of not even reaching that number. So I said, okay, there's going to be greater weight if we put it in Title II, because then we, and the Navajo people, and all programs and divisions, would recognize our CBOs and AVOs as a part of the Navajo Nation government, so that there are no more challenges, and hopefully, no forthcoming challenges regarding their advocacy and their unmet needs. And that requires our attention as legislators to the AVOs, to the CBOs, INNVA's authority and oversight and working relationship with AVOs and CBOs, the Advisory Council, the, the programs and divisions. And some examples are, earlier, Delegate Yazi brought up how Eastern Agency Veterans Organization had been very adamant about advocating on the shortfall of funding that they received for fiscal year twenty-six. And they've been very consistent about ensuring that this body understands, INNVA understands, and others. But by law, that's the weight that's added to them, to recognize that they are part of the government, and they deserve a seat at the table, any agency veterans, any CBOs. Another, another example is the Purple Heart Community. And I, I'm working to help legislate that the And I'm working to help legislate that the Navajo Nation becomes a Purple Heart community. So those types of things are needed, and that's another example. Another example is home site lease, water connections, light connections. Those are also advocacy at the local CBO level that are often oversighted. Because veterans have expressed and some commanders expressed that we're only an interest group, we're only an ad hoc group, nobody takes us seriously. So my response, well, let's codify you by law so that everyone does take you seriously as you are a part of the Navajo Nation Government. And that's why I figured Title Two was the more appropriate body, well, not body, law, right, citation that we would be able to further enhance and advocate on behalf of our veterans, not just for us, but for programs and divisions that help to streamline what is needed to advocate on behalf of our veterans. Thank you.
All right, thank you Delegate Nessa and Chair Karati. Or Delegate Yasi, do you have any follow-up questions? Chair Karati?
Yes, I'm now looking at, let me go directly to the legislation. So page four of ten. So on line twelve, we're learning a lot from each other, and I'm not saying the legislative branch, we also can step it up definitely for veterans issues. But if you want the office of the President or Vice President, so shall provide administrative support and technical assistance. There in the past, and this could be an HR issue, the reason there needs to be, excuse me, a plan of operation, if you could have a plan of operation from DHR right now, what it currently looks like, there should be an individual there specifically like assigned to veterans issues. I know that there is now, but if you look at it, it's all executive staff assistants. That means neither here nor there in the future. And I think that's why the Youth Council didn't get the support that they needed. Because previously, under Begay's administration, Russell Begay, he had moved money from ODY. He like, they used to reallocate money. That's what Presidents' Office do all the time. They're reallocating money from the program. So they, they got money from ODY Office of the Net Youth and then moved that money to his office for a youth staffer, someone to develop. And so, you know, that was a little heartbreaking because again, you're taking from one to another, but now you don't see that person, that funding is still there. So Office of the Net Youth has funded a position there because it no longer goes to them, but there's no one there working on youth. So what I would want to do is, working with HR, a recommendation is that we have then in changing this law, that individual identified that would be the veterans staffer in the President's Office. I'm trying to, historically, there has been a veterans liaison for this administration. And I'm trying to think during COVID. Sometimes my memory is more fuzzy during COVID. I can't remember who was the veterans liaison during COVID, it'll come to me later. But that could be a recommendation. Because what the BIM also says is, so if NNVA was providing technical support to the Veterans Advisory Council, I don't know if their plan of operation is going to change. But the BIM does require an approved plan of operation. So this could be something that we put in the intent of the legislation so that it's crystal clear that when we're moving this entity or who's providing technical assistance, like this was the intent of council, and we don't have a future, a lawyer in the future like a DOJ trying to interpret what we're doing here at council, even though we're the ones here doing it. That's called gaslighting and manipulation, so to make up a story that didn't even happen. So that would be my recommendation on that part. Let me know a little bit more because I think that also can go into what's the expectation, like the current Executive Director, like their roles and responsibilities? If we're going to need to change that, or will this law then change that? And we put those roles and responsibilities into this new position at the Office of President Vice President? Because I would also like to see an increase in like federal and state liaison on maximizing, right now with the federal shutdown, like we should be hearing, how is that impacting our veterans? We should be hearing, okay, even though they're not part of that target program, I mean, they're running off of carryovers too, like what, what's going to happen if this no vote continues? So somebody at a, again, high level, because you're getting high dollars, to help us navigate that. I chair the New Mexico Caucus. We should have someone liaising with Veterans Affairs at New Mexico, Arizona, Utah, at the county level, like we should have that all tightened up so that we're maximizing the benefits for our veterans and we're helping them navigate that process, just like an advocate, instead of like your older brother who's just tired of the constant paperwork, tired of things getting lost. Because a sister organization is Vital Records. So I also wanted to talk about how then are we securing records of our veterans if we're investing a lot of money into the ERP? And so now Vital Records has things online. What's then the move, like who, how can we help the veterans when they're constantly having to provide the same documents over and over again? If we could develop a secure place for them, just like our Vital Records, like concurring? And then all of those documents, even if it's internal, remember we talked about this for scholarship? Why does the Navajo Nation veteran, every time they ask for something, have to give those documents? I can't think of one where, let's say a DD two fourteen has changed, right? So you're asking for this document, it's just like paperwork, it's just busy work, it's just busy work. So how can we make sure that they, so now, that's what I'm looking at. So if it's the Executive Director, just let me know. Because then this is a good opportunity to start tightening up what we're hearing collectively from the veterans and then reviewing all of this as we're looking at the plan of operation. Because it goes back to the budget. So Budget Form Two, then that's where we should have those five areas. Like you have to show me through data that you're helping X amount of veterans with housing, with having access to medical benefits, with substance abuse or mental health, and whatever else they want to, you know, with recognition. So I wanted to make sure that we're using this time and this moment to be able to blend that all in, at least they have an opportunity. It doesn't have to be specific, but everyone should know from this legislation what their role is so that we could keep them accountable. I'm pretty notorious also for saying like I give out invoices because I'm doing other people's jobs. But now what I'm going to do is go back to the budget and be like, this is your job. You have come before the council and said, you were going to do this job. Now, if you can't do it, there has to be some kind of action or correction plan from your supervisor. But that's how we have to make sure that we're not just issuing out money and we're having the same issues year after year after year. I will tell you, this is my eleventh year as a delegate. And I remember year one, the veterans were not respected. The veterans at that time, this was right before the Veterans Act, and this is why, you know, we had to really push for this act, is it was just all lip service. And I no longer want to be in a nation that just gives our veterans and eligible participants lip service. I want to have a clear idea from a policy perspective of what the law, what the budget says clearly, who's accountable? And if they're not doing it, then it's my job to figure out or to tell them, why aren't you doing that? And that's through the audit. So we really haven't talked about the audit. But to get this program to where it needs to be, I don't know if it's through HES, through NABI, through Budget and Finance, but we need that audit cleared up so that it creates that path forward for veterans. And that's what I mean, who's accountable? Who's helping the program move that forward? Because if they have to do all of these other areas, there should be somebody assigned to get that audit completed and moved forward. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that. I want to hear more about the Purple Heart community. We definitely, in looking at our CO Talkers and seeing how the nation itself supported our CO Talkers, there's a lot to learn. Because we didn't do enough as, I would say, as a government and as relatives. So let's not continue to do that for our veterans, whether it's Purple Heart, Surviving Spouses, Gold Star Mothers. I have a grandpa whose name is here at the Veterans Park, Memorial Park. He gave his life for our country. And what I know is how dramatically that impacted my family and how we see our military service as a military family and how we help. And so the nation should have that same sentiment going forward. Understanding that not everybody will get it their way. There are individuals that maybe want to benefit themselves. But if we have these oversights, then we can monitor that. Because we're not even talking about the unsheltered veterans who are being, you know, they're the one, they're at high risk for exposure, they're at high risk for mistreatment. And they have mental and trauma issues that we have to have a plan for. And so they may not be the ones who can go to the CBO meetings, but we have to be able to advocate. And I would want the CBOs to also advocate. Because one of our meetings for missing and murdered Dineh relatives in Gallup, it wasn't set up, but it clearly became a conversation about missing comrades. And not only comrades who were there in the battlefield, but also when they came home. And hearing from some of the descendants of CO Talkers, how their fathers and grandfathers, you know, were heinously murdered or on the streets of Gallup. And so if we're talking about this collective issue, then I would want to make sure these Advisory Councils look at it from the holistic veterans perspective and not just the individuals who have the opportunity to go to the meetings and their benefit, but look really at, right, it continues. The values and everything that you're brought up with, the values that you learned from your military experience, it continues, so we have to look out for one another. So what does that look like in this dynamic? If we could figure out the Veterans Trust Fund? I wanted to talk a little bit about housing. I'm not sure if you're prepared today to talk about that. But I also wanted to see how we could move forward. But Chair Committee Members, since this is a work session where I'm referring to the legislation but also broader issues, my hope is veterans at least know that their issues are being heard. And that at least collectively here and those on the line and those on the nation that we're going to set up a plan. We, you know, what do they say? A failure to plan is a plan to fail. And that's not what we were taught, right? That was not what we were taught. We were taught to plan, to focus, to put seed in the ground, to cultivate and to harvest and to continue on. We can't just keep pointing the fingers at each other, but then let's create this energy so that we could work on it together. And it maybe it's working with the Veterans Advisory Council? Like if they already have a strategic plan, okay, then let's just, let's, let's start working away on it to get collective resources because we have the Dineh Action Plan. And, you know, we're really making sure that, so MMDR is a part of it, violence prevention, substance abuse prevention and suicide prevention. And those are all the hot issues in there are veterans. And so what resources and how, and how are we helping them in a holistic manner? So appreciate the conversation, colleagues here on the line and others who are advocating for our Navajo veterans. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Karati for highlighting a lot of the other issues that this legislation does address. And I think there has to be, I do agree, there has to be a deeper conversation on housing as a whole. I know there's a whole lot of stakeholders and also entities that are involved. I know we did have a report from two of our veterans from Chinli last week during Navajia Committee. And those were some of the obligations that were raised to them on their mortgage payments with NHA Homes. And I know that was addressed through Health and Education Human Services yesterday through a report as well. But we do need to coordinate those notes with our advisors and to see if any of the answers or solution was given from meaning of the veterans that had questions on that day. So we would have to compare to our Navajia Kit notes and also with the HESI advisor, we can also do that. And then in return to the Purple Heart, I know I've been, been a part of that with my, one of my chapters with Nazlini Chapter Organization. There's actually two, only two communities on the Navajo Nation that are recognized as Purple Heart community. The first one was Loop Chapter, and the second one, we just celebrated back in August for Nazlini. So there is a process through the military order of the Purple Heart and the nearest branch is located in Flagstaff. So we did work with them. And then with the chapter, they did have to present a supporting resolution, and then they also have to submit an application. And then doing a whole recognition ceremony like road signs that are initiating the community into the Purple Heart. So it did take the chapter, my home chapter, about two years or a year and a half to do that process. So now the road signs are up. And it does, it brings a lot of the issues that many of our veterans go through. It highlights many of the resources that is still lacking within our communities and also the nation as a whole. But I think it is a conversation that the, this body can have is recognizing the whole Navajo Nation as a Purple Heart. Because many of our, as we heard, many of our CBOs don't have the necessary resources to go through the whole application process. So just looking at that context, I know that some of our chapters do hinder some of those avenues to even apply for an application or how that process looks like. But we've been more than willing to share some of that information to Chair Karati and also Delegate Yasi on how to move forward if your chapter is also interested in becoming a Purple Heart community. And my main contact has been my chapter president, he is a Purple Heart himself, so he did have that firsthand knowledge on how to do that process, but more than willing to give you the contact information. And we'll go back to Delegate Nessa.
For the question again, on page four of ten. So I know through HES JY zero four sixteen, when it established a plan of operations for the Advisory Council, they do provide the guidance to the OPVP, and this was done back in 2016. So that reference is really carrying that forward to ensure that, you know, those recommendations and through this legislation, because it would now be inclusive of AVOs and CBOs, would then go directly to the President and any forthcoming President and Vice President of the Navajo Nation. And I know that through the NNVA, through the Advisory Council, they've been doing several advocacy trips. I know not only through the Purple Heart, but also through other avenues. I know through grants, I know that the NNVAs about to become a recipient of a grant coming from the state of Arizona. So I know the expectations are also confined here with the Navajo Nation, but I think the expectation is much larger as well when we start to talk about our state and federal partners. And so, again, we do have the VA Director who's also here. We also have the newly elected Chair of the Advisory Council, First Sergeant Lewis, who is also present. If there's also additional questions on some of that advocacy as well as the work and technical assistance that they provide to the Veterans Advisory Council and veterans abroad. I know when I attended the Western Agency Veterans Organization meeting out in Kaibato back in July, I want to say, June, July timeframe, there was discussions at the time on clarifications regarding the support and technical assistance. And I think with this legislation, if it's enacted, then guarantees the support that they need. think with this legislation, if it's enacted, then guarantees the support that they need at the CBO level. And that was also brought to my attention here this morning, prior to the start of our meeting, by the Commander for Eastern Agency Veterans Organization as well, Commander Platero, who asked about that technical assistance and if that would be guaranteed then to the CBOs. Because currently, they do lack that technical support and the assistance. And so through the OPVP, through the Advisory Council, and even through us as legislators, would be able to transend that form of communication, as well as assistance, to the CBO levels. Because there are certain challenges, unfortunately, that come up during some of these meetings. And again, going back to my time at Kaibato, when they talk about the possibility of the courts, not the courts, attorneys, and those types of assistance as well. And so those types of guarantees are inserted into, through this legislation, and being able to ensure that they have some of those technical assistance and support. And so some of the things that, again, that they lack, and we want to be able to see that through, I know oftentimes, and it's been brought up to my attention by the Eastern Agency Veterans Organization, that, you know, maybe it's not a little detailed. And so sometimes when you talk about law, you don't want to confine too much because it's just really specific, whereas you want to kind of initiate something that's a little more comprehensive and more flexible, considering the different variations that our CBOs and AVOs come from. But that's a good recommendation, and going back to addressing the plan of ops, as well from NNVA, as well as from the Advisory Council, and being able to move in that direction if needed. Thank you.
Thank you Delegate Ness. And there was also that request from Chair Karadi. We do have Ms. Baldwin that's also here with us in the chamber. Shada, if you do want to answer to any of the questions or be part of the dialogue, you're more than welcome to do so. Oh, you can come down. Yes, you can come down for the microphone.
For this opportunity. With regards to the questions that are being asked by Honorable Delegate Karadi with the distribution methodology utilized, what the Veterans Administration does is they take into account the eligible veterans. And as my, as Dr. Andy Nez, our delegate, had answered, the eligibility process primarily consists of the four documents, DD 214, Social Security Card, Certificate of Indian Blood, and the valid ID. We see a decrease in the numbers that are being reported due to the fact that when we are addressing the audit needs, oftentimes with New Mexico, the veterans have expired IDs on file. So with veterans who reach a certain age, the state of New Mexico requires they update their ID every year. Now, this is very helpful because in some instances, we do not hear from a veteran for a number of months, years, and we don't know if they've deceased. We don't know if, on the better end, if they won the lottery. So they may not need the Veterans Trust Funds. So when we look at the audit, a primary finding was looking at the documentation. And they're seeing, our auditors are seeing that the name spellings are not correct. We have a certificate of Indian blood that reads a different name as opposed to what the DD 214 says. In prior years, many times, our agency offices were counting files where only one of the four documents were on file. So let's say an agency office had just a DD 214. Well, that doesn't give us the burden of proof to show that that one DD 214 belonged to a Navajo veteran. So these are other strenuating circumstances that are results of the audits. So now what we are doing is we are ensuring that each of the documents are on file, and not until all four documents are on file can they can be considered towards the count. Another point is the name spelling. The uniformity of the name spellings is very crucial. I gave this example yesterday at our Oversight Committee meeting, in which a DD 214 may read Bobby Ann Baldwin, yet the certificate of Indian blood reads Bobby A. Baldwin, and then the Social Security Card may just read Bobby Baldwin. When it comes from the auditor's perspective, this is considered three different individuals because there is no consistency across the board. We are trying to work with our agency offices and veterans by trying to make the link, a reasonable link to each of the documents. Let's say we cannot update the DD 214 immediately. So what our VSOs and our team members are doing is we are writing a memo to the file of the veteran indicating I can make a reasonable connection that this DD 214 and this certificate of Indian blood are connected to the same individual based on the date of birth, or based on the last name and first name spelling, or even the agency from where the certificate of Indian blood is originating. So we are trying to meet the needs of the veterans, surviving spouses and Gold Star Mothers in that manner. Also, when we look at the laws associated with the distribution of dollars, it does indicate that the distribution or allocation to the chapter veterans organization is in correlation with the veteran count. So when we talk about the veteran count, it's not just the veterans, it's also including the surviving spouses and Gold Star Mothers. So when we do that, we have to make sure that these people are indeed eligible recipients to be considered towards the count. In doing this, we realize that the count will fluctuate depending on where these veterans are located. Oftentimes, what we're hearing from people who choose not to participate in a chapter veterans organization meeting is because they are ostracized. They are excluded, they are bullied, they are made fun of, they are called out because one of many reasons that do not align with the members, the commanders. And in some instances, it's families who are controlling these chapter veterans organizations. The officers are oftentimes related, or the members who show up are just the family members of that one officer. So seeing the way that these chapter veterans organizations are operating, I think that in this legislation that's coming up, we really need to understand that our chapter veterans organizations are the heartbeat of the way we provide the information to veterans. We've noticed that when we provide information at the Advisory Council level, at the agency level, even after meeting with our veterans who are officers for what we call a budget orientation, this information, probably seven times out of 10, is not reaching the grassroots veterans. The information is not being shared, the information is not being disseminated, the opportunities are not being provided. We do have a number of great commanders who do go above and beyond. However, that's about 30% of what our chapter veterans organizations consist of. Now, in those instances where it's the commanders who are not sharing the information, that's where a lot of questions are redundant and they keep being asked of the Veteran Service Officers of the administration towards the agency commanders and towards the Veterans Advisory Council. And a lot of times, these individuals are the same individuals who have been in this position for decades. And again, it's that control, it's that monopoly, it's that mentality that is something that is going to be garnered for as long as they can possibly stand the responsibilities. So when we also look at our chapter veterans organizations, I would want to bring to this body's attention, safety. Safety is a big concern, especially with our Veterans Administration. I shared this information some months back to where we had lost a new employee due to her being assaulted. And we have officers who happen to have felony records. And they, they're not just minor felony records. I don't know if there's such thing. But these are people who can be categorized as sex offenders, these are people who can be categorized as murderers, these are people who can be categorized as habitual substance abusers. And for whatever reason, that's stemming into our Veterans Administration now, to where we have employees who are being stalked, their time is being kept, there's a log of when they are coming and going. Our Veteran Service Officers are being threatened at the windows. We've also had another individual who was practically stalked all the way to the gas station with their family members, their minor children in the vehicle. So these are not just isolated incidences. And when I had first begun my role here, there was also incidences of sexual harassment. Sexual harassment, not only from the veterans, but also internally, and that had to be addressed. And it is our hope that in working with this legislation and in working with the veterans and the officers of the chapter veterans organization, there is going to be some type of code of ethics, there is going to be a certain background check, because these people are working with the community, number one. Number two is they are going to be privy to sensitive information, such as veterans' identifications, veterans' mailing addresses, location of homes. So these are areas of concern that we see from the administrative side, and we would like to make sure that is something that is taken into consideration. When we talk about the Advisory Council utilizing funding, and how or who's going to pay them, and how these funds are going to be disseminated, this is not so much of a hindrance for the staff of the Advisory Council, for the Veterans Administration. We can do the processing of the payments. We do not mind providing that technical assistance to the Advisory Council. But when it comes down to asking for the chapter veterans organization to be technically assisted by the agency office from the administration, that's where we, I want to say we need to draw the line because, take Eastern Agency, for example, they have 31 chapters. Essentially, that's 90, roughly about 93 officers we are going to have to be working with if that is going to be the avenue we take. That's 93 different officers we're going to be having to process their payments, possibly doing minutes for. What is the extent or what is the limitation for that? Because if they're being provided a stipend, I would imagine that that would be their wheelhouse to prepare those documents, those agendas, those meeting minutes, those signing sheets, those general claim forms for stipends to be processed. Because as I explained yesterday, again, is that we have what we refer to in the military as like a fire team, three to four people, Veteran Service Officer, Account Maintenance Specialist, Office Assistant, and AMS, Veteran Service Officer, who take care of over 2,000 to 3,000 veterans. So how do we justify the workload? Our team members don't get overtime. We have, just for example, Northern Agency, just last week spent over $600,000. That's 320 Form 105s that have been processed. And that took a really big team effort of all the agencies coming together, the AMSs, the VSOs, the OSs, and OAs, for us to tackle that big undertaking. When we have only three or four individuals processing all these payments, and we understand that the payments are crucial to the livelihood and to the benefit of the veteran, and we do not want them waiting months on in, weeks on in for payments, we have to do what we need to do with our personnel, and we need to ensure that it's all hands on deck when payments are starting to pile up. So when we talk about having staff to provide the technical assistance, I'd like to say that we do not have the capacity to do that. We barely have the capacity to run these payments as is, without expecting the personnel to get burnt out. We are staying after hours quite often. Many people feel dedicated to their job and to the veterans, so they work through their lunches. They're reminded to take their lunch, but they understand that this is someone's livelihood. This could trigger someone. This could be a strenuous extenuating circumstance. Perhaps if we were to look at payments, to do a per cap approach reflective of what the formula is at the beginning of every year, and provide a payment card, a Visa card, reflecting the amount, perhaps that's another avenue that we can consider, so that no one has to wait and we can just record the card number along with the amount on the card and who, taking a picture of the veteran to show proof that, yes, the veteran was here, the veteran got the card, the veteran went on their way. I think that is one avenue that we can look at as well, because printing the checks here, accounts payable, costing $50 per check, as well as the possibility of those checks getting lost. I think last year, we had about a dozen checks that did get lost in the mail, finally made their way back to the nation. But then again, that's another $50 to reprint those checks. So looking at these avenues, I think that we need to keep into consideration the limitations that the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration has with a skeleton crew, essentially, trying to meet the needs of all the veterans and surviving spouses and Gold Star Mothers across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you Director Baldwin. And then, so that was a quick summary overview of the capturing all the questions and also comments that we have made throughout this morning. So at this time, I'm going to recognize Delegate Yasi, if you do have any question for the Director. Delegate Yasi?
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Executive Director Baldwin for being present here in the chambers and allowing us to get some clarification, or at least ask some questions. The first one I want to start off with is the four documents that are required. When you mentioned ID, it's not really specific as you're asking for a military or a civilian ID. I have an ID here, and my expiration is indefinite. So it stays with me, the name that's on here will always be the same as long as I possess this card. And when we do our military entrance, I do believe that we do have to provide identifying information, such as our Social Security Cards, birth certificates, et cetera. Those documents should not be changed in any way as it reflect on the ID. The only thing, the only one that I would be concerned about is our internal certificate of Indian blood. That might have some discrepancies, but that would be my first question. Madam Director, my second question is, when we reference, and just for explanation for our veterans and those that are listening, when we reference to Gold Star Mothers, are we just specifically addressing a service member's mother? Or we also, can we, what's the possibility of changing that to making it a Gold Star parent in case that the surviving individual is a father or a male figure? So this has been a big one, and I do appreciate your presentation today. But what I wanted to ask is, how does NNVA recognize itself as a health organization? And if so, if there are other conditions that prevent this body or this administration, the Veterans Administration, to prevent them from, prohibit them from sharing any identifying information? My experience out in the field with my CBOs is they don't ask for Social Security numbers, they don't ask for real sensitive information. The only demographics that I've heard commanders asking is name and possibly... The only demographics that I, that I've heard commanders asking is name and possibly, uh, I'm sure we all know where each others live, but mainly just the name, just to, uh, justify their, their, uh, active participants. So I know there are, uh, there could be potential risks. There are potential hazards. There are, um, it is vulnerable for a person to share their identifying information, but if we could just at least allow, uh, if, if the, um, your policies would allow at least the names to be shared with our, our veterans organizations. And I really do, uh, appreciate another of those, uh, the differations between the, the, uh, the, the general fund and the VTF as far as compensation in the form of stipends. I do support that if the stipends did come out of general funds, that allows, um, more direct services through Veteran Trust Fund to our veterans out in the field. So that would be another, uh, question that I may have or a recommendation. Uh, the, and, uh, on October seventh, there was, uh, uh, an agency of Veterans Organization meeting. And do we have copies of that resolution? If not, if, I'd like to go ahead and see if I can obtain a copy of that resolution that was, uh, done on October seventh. And, um, lastly, regarding, uh, the requests for additional work sessions, um, I'm getting messages from my constituents, from my veterans, that some are, uh, because of inclement weather or because of no, uh, Wi-Fi services or whatever the case may be, they still would like an in-person, uh, presentation over at the Eastern, uh, Agency. I know that right now, uh, wanted to make a, explore trying to request for those fundings through the legislative branch, but I know we are in a budget crisis under our situation, so we don't, we can't really provide those support services or direct services out in the field to, to our, our veterans. So, also with the, within that same context of these messages that I'm receiving, you did mention that, uh, there are some concerns about, um, o- officers. And, um, you did mention that there might be some, some areas that might be monopolized or that are being controlled by, uh, uh, certain individuals. But would the, would it be possible to implement some form of, uh, requirement that, uh, we avoid, um, immediate family members or immediate grandchildren to, uh, not to be serving within the same term? So that would be one thing. And thank you for your safety, uh, addressing your safety and for your staff as well. I've heard my, uh, Commander, Vice Commander reiterate, please, this is not a place for violence. If you have questions, if you have concerns, or if you're under whatever, uh, possible influence, you know, just please do not, do not. So, with that, uh, Madam, um, Director Baldwin, those would be my questions and I will go ahead and yield the floor back. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your question, uh, your questions that you've had for me. First of all, I, your question was regarding the identification card, and thank you for showing your example. That is one of the methodologies that we're utilizing per the policy. The policy does indicate must provide a current copy of a valid government photo identification card. So it's not necessarily the driver's license or state ID that we're, we're acknowledging. We're also acknowledging the VA ID card, the military ID card, even the Navajo Nation Certificate of Indian Blood card. So we are taking those into consideration to meet the needs of the veterans and to stay in compliance with our policies. The next question that you had was regarding the Gold Star Parent versus the Gold Star Mother. I apologize, my lingo is still with Gold Star Parent, um, Gold Star Mother. So we do acknowledge the Gold Star Parent, it's just the Gold Star Parent. Should they draw from the Veterans Trust Fund? They both cannot draw at the same time, it would be one or the other. So I do stand corrected in that. It is Gold Star Parent, not Gold Star Mother. And then HIPAA, how does N-NVA recognize themselves as a healthcare provider? We don't recognize ourselves as a healthcare provider, however, due to the fact that we have veterans who submit healthcare documents such as a VA healthcare ID card or VA medical records to meet the needs or the, um, the requirements to get certain benefits such as a VA medical appointment. Those are the instances to where we are trying to keep the confidentiality and to maintain, uh, safe record keeping, following not only HIPAA but Navajo Nation Privacy Act, also following the FTI, which is the, um, FTI is Federal Tax Identification Information, so that we are able to maintain the confidentiality of everyone who is applying. I understand that a lot of commanders are asking for the listing of who applied, uh, who got money, give me the names. We do provide monthly stipend or monthly budget sheets to the, to the commanders. And in seeing this, on the first year that I was supervising these pro- this program, we found a lot of family members or veterans who were ridiculed or who were, um, I guess, spoken to negatively because they were able to draw from the trust fund. Why do you need the funding? You're, you're well off. Why, you don't even live here. You live off the reservation. Why is your family member drawing from this? They're just going to drink on the funds. I mean, just, what are veterans' needs are nobody's business except the veterans is the way that I look at it. So when we talk about the confidentiality of the listing and why the listing is not being provided, please understand this is something that we've heard from each of the agencies that that type of communication is being given to the veteran. And we don't want to be the responsible party for sending someone over the edge when they make that ultimate decision in a negative way that impacts everyone who loves them, their, their entire family member. So please be cognizant of that, um, commanders and our leaders here is that we want to make sure everyone is safe and everyone has an opportunity to this funding should they be eligible. The next question was about the stipends out of general funds instead of trust funds. This is one of the discussions where Shatilla was talking about and, um, Delegate Crady utilizing the general funds to pay the stipends. I believe that this is a good decision because when you look at the original intent of the Veterans Trust Fund, the original intent of the Veterans Trust Fund was to assist those veterans who were having a hard time. When you look back in, back in late nineties, there was veterans who were saying, I can't make it to my VA appointment. If I could make it there, I can get a VA rating. Then I don't have to rely on Veteran Trust Funds. Um, I'll be getting my disability rating through VA. This was a means to be that stopgap so we can help veterans to get to their appointments, help them to get some groceries for the upcoming year, help them to get some wood, some fuel for their homes so that they would be able to stay warm. This is not a funding source that is going to be something that is recurring. It's not granted sure as, sure as that we are able to see every day. It is a stopgap. It is a financial assistance program. It is not an income or a means to be a source of income or financial monthly stipend. This is a once a year opportunity. And when you look at the legislation, and I recall having this discussion with this original inception had begun with my father and several other veterans, listening to them, is this is only going to be a he- a helping hand. It's not something that we are going to be drawing from all the time. It would be extenuating circumstances. Hence, at the time, they were talking about hardship assistance or emergency assistance is what they called it. Well, emergency assistance should be something that's paid out immediately. And Ethan, I believe that's how the checks were issued. They were issued within five business days. Well, now it's relabeled as hardship assistance and we know that the checks take a little bit longer than five days, sometimes five weeks, but we have to understand that this is not an emergency assistance. And we have to really make the connection to what is really needed. We have veterans who apply for this funding for well over fifteen, twenty years, every year on a consistent basis. Where do we draw the line? And we hear all the time, veterans are always saying, we need more money, we need more money, we need more money. Well, where is, where, what is the threshold is my question? What is the threshold? Because now they have trust fund, uh, and, and by the grace of this council, they also have general funds. But where is the threshold when we have the federal government there to meet the demands that they're asking for? It's just the fact that the veterans don't want to go through the paper trail that is needed, but more often than not, looking at the way that our Veteran Service Officers help veterans get their claims, they're doing a really wonderful job in helping these veterans to get their VA benefits. And perhaps that's another area that we need to look at is if a veteran is receiving VA benefits, a hundred percent, they're receiving well over four thousand dollars a month. Why would they need to draw from the trust fund? Where is the need there? Is that going to be a limitation? Is that going to be a factor? Should it be a factor? I believe it should because we have other veterans who, um, were discharged out of the military, especially Vietnam era and back due to discrimination. And they were given a bad conduct discharge, a dishonorable discharge simply because they were not white. So these are discussions and these are the impacts that it has on veterans. And they don't want to go through the bureaucracy of doing an upgrade because the VA already let them down, their, their branch of service let them down with that type of service discharge. I mean, we can go on and on about all the hindrances that our veterans have in getting the funding that is well deserved to them. And it's a challenge, especially at the VA level because we try and try to encourage more and more people to apply. However, with their dissatisfaction with the relationship and the trust that they have with big VA, it's very difficult. Um, but that is something that we need to take into consideration is if a veteran is receiving well over forty K from VA disability, do they really need Vet- Navajo Nation Veterans Trust Funds? And then the next question is a resolution from October seventh. Is this from Eastern Agency? No? I thought you were there. You and I were both there at Casper Lake.
No, that's the Agency, that's the Eastern.
Agency Commander's.
This is the Advisory, uh.
Advisory Council.
Apparently you meant on the, it's Tuesday or the seventh?
Tuesday.
Yes.
Advisory Council.
Were there any resolutions that was produced at that meeting?
There were five resolutions, I believe, on the agenda. However, I've not received any of them. And then the request for additional work sessions, uh, we, in NVA, we're always open to additional work sessions. And that is where we believe that having that communication with not only the commanders but the veterans at the grassroots, because we see the miscommunication or lack of communication, therefore, from the officers to the grassroots is essential. And we were contemplating, and again, but we're a skeleton crew. So if we want to do media blasts, if we want to do, um, posts, if we want to do information that's being sent out to each of the email addresses, I mean, that's why we collect them, it's very challenging, especially right now because we are processing payments. If we had a public information officer on board, a media person on board, I think it would be a lot easier for us. But as it is, we are all helping each other to process payments for veterans at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Director, uh, for responding to those questions. Um, uh, just, just a follow-up. Uh, as far as thresholds, as far as seeking additional services and additional, um, information that's vested with N-NVA, whether you work with your state partners or your federal partners, and we really don't get that. Uh, we sometimes, we really appreciate when, I don't know if the CVOs or the hosting chapters that invite, uh, state agencies or, uh, other VA programs to their, to their meetings. And they do provide pamphlets, they do provide those services, but I don't know if, um, N-NVA is actually spearheading those efforts. And as far as, uh, compensation, again, uh, we, we are really speaking on a very sensitive , uh, subject here. Uh, when we're talking about, uh, VA disabilities and medical conditions, that's, that's, we are crossing the line of HIPAA there. So with that, how, how do we even begin to even think that? Because you're already getting, um, basically your compensation from the federal government, you are not entitled to any, anything supplement. I understand that the Veterans Trust Fund is supplemental. It's not meant to be base income for an annual earning, uh, but I think that, that's, that's another area that's just going to, uh, possibly need some more research is the, uh, the compensation that our veterans are receiving. And that's completely medically related. So thank you for, for that, Madam, uh, Director. And, um, Madam Speaker, I also have, uh, I requested if I could have a member of my Eastern Agency Veterans, uh, um, do a presentation. Uh, my Vice Commander is not available, however, I do have Eastern Agency Commander Gilbert Patero here in the chambers. If we could just go ahead and identify him to ask a couple of questions, ma'am, uh, Madam Speaker? Thank you.
Good morning. Madam Speaker, uh, Delegate Nez, uh, Delegate Crady, Delegate Yasi, Director Baldwin, staff members that are here, comrades that are present in the council chambers. Uh, my name is Gilbert Patero. I am the, um, Commander of the Eastern Navajo Agency Veterans Organization. And, um, I've been in this position as a Commander of my agency in Tojale for approximately twelve, thirteen years. So, uh, this is kind of interesting to be here in the chambers. I thank you for the opportunity. I'll get right to the point. This legislation, um, was tabled through our agency, the first round. And the reason behind that was the language in the legislation. It was, it was spoken that the, the, uh, agencies and the CVOs were to be brought under title to for more assistance, more technical assistance from the Navajo Nation. However, within the legislation, there is no language that is written that provides the guidance or provides information of how this is going to happen. And also of what, what or how the, the agencies and the CVOs will benefit from going under or during this change. So this is, well, this is one of the reasons, and I had many discussions with, uh, Delegate, Dr. Nez. Also, the, the amendments of the Veterans Act, there are several amendments under the Veterans Act that I think need to be deeply discussed amongst the veterans, amongst the commanders especially. We as commanders are the ones that deal directly with how the operation of the CVOs and AVOs are run. Uh, that's, that was some of the main reasons that, that I've had deep discussions with, uh, Dr. Nez. And I appreciate his understanding on, on our part as an agency. Uh, other issues that have come up are the Privacy Act, um, issue with, with allowing information to come back to the agency or the CVOs. Uh, this is kind of vital information for CVOs to know. Uh, this is kind of vital information for CVOs to know who is active, who is inactive. Uh, and I understand the, the issue of the Privacy Act. However, in the United States Department of Justice, under the Privacy Act, there are twelve exemptions to the Privacy Act. And one of those Privacy Acts is the Need to Know. The Need to Know is, is, is written in there so an agency or an organization can move forward collectively to get the job done, to fulfill the mission. And right now, I feel our commanders, um, are being hindered by not being provided this information. We are not asking for a full count of vital information, just names of who are active and inactive, so we can positively advocate for our veterans and get these payments done in a more progressive manner. The issue of VA compensation versus financial assistance through the Veterans Trust Fund, I believe those are two different animals. The veterans' compensation, a veteran receives compensation due to his injuries or what, what he encountered during the time he was in service. This is during his service time. So a Vietnam veteran may have come back home with injuries, with loss of limb, or been, or be, or be diagnosed with PTSD. That's got nothing to do with receiving financial assistance from the Veterans Trust Fund. That is totally different. I believe that even though an individual receives a hundred percent disability, that individual still is a member of the Navajo Nation and is a veteran with a certificate of Indian blood and should receive the financial assistance as deemed by the veterans, as deemed through the Veterans Trust Fund. These are a few of the, um, issues that have come up with our agency. And as commander of the Eastern Agency, I can only speak on behalf of the Eastern Agency. And I can almost rest assured that some of these concerns do and are within the other agencies. And these are just my, my concerns, and these are the concerns that have been brought up at previous meetings. I was, uh, seated as the Eastern Agency Commander here in October, but I have been following this legislation for several months as, uh, Delegate Nez has dropped the legislation. And I've been following it with some of my other comrades through, uh, our agency. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Akashila Ha, thank you, Commander Patero, for enlightening us on some of your comments and some of your concerns regarding Eastern Navajo Agency. So, you know, those comments, uh, have been made in the record here during this work session. And then we can go ahead and refer and see how we might to be able to continue our efforts in working together and coordinating. And I do appreciate your, uh, your, your comments. And I don't believe there were any recommendations, just concerns from your agency. Uh, yes, sir, go ahead.
What amendments that are coming in, the amendments that are going to be made here or here at, pretty soon, I think those amendments need to be addressed again through the agencies. Uh, just like the Advisory Council did, did approve a resolution. I'd like to see a copy of those amendments on paper in black and white to explain to our, our, our agency CVOs and Eastern Agency. And I think that would go strictly and basically for all the agencies to see what kind of amendments are going to be included or put into this legislation, legislation. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you again, Commander Patero. So with that, we'll go ahead and, uh, ask, uh, President if we might, and also in NVA, if we could get copies of those resolutions. I think there was like five, you mentioned there might, might be five, from the Advisory Council meeting that took place October seventh. So we'll go ahead and forward that, and once we get that information, we can disseminate it. So I'll, with that, I don't have any more questions or at the moment. So I'll go ahead and yield the floor back to Tzila. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, the mics were going back and forth here. Uh, so, Ha, Commander, uh, Patero, um, as you mentioned, you know, I've had the, uh, opportunity to discuss with several of our commanders from each agency. Um, in our previous discussion, Commander Patero did give some recommendations. Um, and those are also attached to the legislation. And considering those, um, moving forward to provide some clarity, I understand that there are additional, um, concerns regarding, you know, a multitude of areas when it comes to supporting our veterans. And during a convening, um, where we had the president of Commander Patero, um, you know, I did to, I did commit to learning about some of those areas and some of the additional legislations that are needed to support our veterans. And so some of them, they do correlate with the existing legislation that we are discussing here. And then some, of course, can be standalone legislations that I think, um, address other matters, which, uh, again, I'm open to learning and engaging with. And as far as the requests from Delegate Yaizy, um, it is true. I did, um, we did pass a legis, uh, resolution during the Advisory Council meeting that happened last week on, uh, Tuesday. And, um, once it is signed and confirmed, um, the goal, well, yeah, the goal is to attach it to the legislation. Now, any amendments that come out of today's work session are also going to be proposed back to the Advisory Council so that they understand what proposed amendments, um, may be forthcoming. And the reason for that is I did speak earlier about Nabik Yatia and how that was one of the concerns was, um, the changes, the proposed changes. Uh, me personally, I didn't see them as huge, significant changes that, you know, changed the intent of the legislation. They were more just technical errors. Um, but considering what we may or may not see, uh, following this work session, uh, yes, you will see it back at the Advisory Council. I did have an opportunity to speak to First Sergeant Lewis and asked for a forthcoming, uh, special meeting so that we can entertain that. But once, for, for at least the resolution I proposed, because I, I left, while they were still in discussion, but it was after the resolution was passed. But once it is signed and everything, and then I'll forward it, it'll be attached to the legislation. Um, as far as the other four resolutions, uh, I'm not sure that, um, you know, when Ms. Baldwin is in receipt of those or when the council certifies those, then, then, uh, we can work to get that to you as well. So, and I appreciate, again, the ongoing, um, recommendations, uh, discussions here that are happening, and I think they are very important, um, when considering those advances to our veterans.
Thank you, Delegate Dr. Andy Nez. And again, thank you for your presentation insight on the overview of the whole legislation and then also other subjects, areas that also need proposing maybe another work session? Because I know there are other areas such as housing that could be a work session in itself. So, but for the amendments, as Delegate Dr. Andy Nez said, he'll be working closely with our veteran organization to make sure that there is that consensus. And I know that was, uh, one of the areas of concern when we had that debate on the floor was, uh, the Advisory Council to make sure that they do review any of the amendments that could potentially come on the floor. So again, uh, for, we did take note. Uh, the last amendment did fail with a vote of seven in favor, ten opposed. So that is within the packet of the legislation. And also, uh, different areas. Thank you for, uh, Delegate Nez, for having a lot of those questions. Ado Niho Do, Nihya Commander Lo, thank you for being here with us and listening to the discussion. I know it's a very huge topic that we reviewed too as well. And although, Qodosh, it's, uh, Ms. Baldwin, I, I think one thing that we, uh, would need from your office is, one of the current discussion that we had was on the NHA homes. And it, I don't know if it was just provided verbally, but if you could address, uh, some of the solutions that came about from the Health Education Human Services? And also if you can address that maybe like in a memo or a letter format to the committee? So then we have the most updated information. So I know with the committee, it goes towards all, all of the twenty-four members. And colleagues, are there any other additional action items that we can highlight from this work session? Uh, Chair Karde?
Uh, yes, so, uh, I don't plan to make an amendment. I appreciate that you're going to go back to the Veterans Advisory Council, um, just to let them know about, I think it was like to add a resolution. I think that's important, uh, just how we envisioned, uh, the veterans' participation in the legislative process. I don't know if we gave time to First Sergeant Lewis, um, but if we could give him some time, colleagues. I just wanted to mention, because I think with a lot of data, we'll be able to review. So there's a lot of reporting that's going to be in here, quarterly reports, you know, all written reports. Just some suggestions, I know it does say that the Executive Director shall be in-person, like an in-person summary. I think in the future, there should be some flexibility, just in case, for whatever reason, the Executive Director's not able to present in front of the Advisory Council. I know it's important for some individuals to see someone face-to-face. So, you know, they see it as, uh, being honorable. But, um, like today, we're, we're dealing with massive flooding. Uh, we're dealing with, um, budget issues, you know? So I always believe that there should be some flexibility, but also, um, because of questions, uh, need to be, like, if questions need to be brought up, the best practice is to give it to them beforehand so they're prepared for the meeting. So, um, I just wanted to say with that language, I, I, I don't propose to change it, but that could be something we talk about in the future. I did see on page seven of ten, line sixteen, it does say, "Living on the Navajo Nation." As we mentioned, like, I believe that we should look at our Navajo Nation veterans holistically. And so, um, I don't think that was the best language to put in there. But if the veterans approved it and it's gotten to this point, I just wanted to red flag that for future discussions on, um, when plan of operations are developed, uh, what is going to be the effort of the CVOs, AVOs, and the Veterans Advisory Council to hear all of the voices across the, across the board? And let's see, I appreciate the, um, comment from Mr. Patero, just in terms of like the implementation. Oh, there's a small typo, line seventeen, there's a closing parentheses. I just wanted to see, is there a beginning parentheses or that just needs to be removed? See how weird my brain is? I used to work for the council, so I would have to review all these policies. Ugh, I don't know how to get it out of my brain. Okay, so let's do that. Let's, let's talk about how, again, that it could be that policy plan of action, the implementation, so everybody knows their, um, their role and what they have to do. I did get some feedback, um, regarding the CVOs and A, um, AVOs' plan of operation. Is there going to be a best practice template? It does look like they can have some autonomy, uh, so that what are some opportunities? I mean, we go to GPT chat now and it could just develop anything? Because some were asking me, um, well, why would there be a limit at the Advisory Council, but not at a CVO? And I told them, "That's not for me to decide, that would be for you to decide at your CVO." Right here, all of the chap, all of the agencies have supported a time limit for their Advisory Council. So again, I'll defer to, um, the veterans. I just also would want to see why the recommendation was not to have an AVO leadership beyond the Advisory Council? Because the way communication filters up, um, just, this was hopefully my last question as we wrap up. So if we're at a community level, that's, that's how we're envisioning the CVOs. And then they go to the agency level, because it's all about communication and, you know, bringing back that information. So when you go from the AVO to the Advisory Council, just help me understand why they wouldn't... Maybe I read it wrong. Was it just an officer of AVO or anybody from the AVO? Because I'm just looking at, you have to be at these meetings or listen in to understand what's happening. But again, Zoom, Otter has great meeting notes, so that's not the end of the world. But I just would want to be sure that if someone who wanted to be at the Veterans Council, they're also engaging with the AVOs and the CVOs, right? It's like a constant communication. So just help me understand that process. I'm not going to change it because you already have supporting documentation, but it is something to, to look at and can, to understand. Because I'm always trying to find best ways to have our people be directly involved with decision-making. And so, um, this could be, I mean, if we looked at this and parallel it with our role, since they're in Title II, you know, the CVOs are at the chapter level, agencies, of course, are agency councils. And then the Veterans Council, you know, ten of you, that's nearly half of the council here. So, like, I just want to make sure that communication comes back and forth, because you don't want the lone wolf to go in there and just have their own personal agenda and haven't heard from the CVOs, right? Like, they should be bring, I always tell my chapters, a chapter resolution, because X person, you know, there has to be priorities and a communication. So how do we get that? Because last council, this can get very political. And last council, it got very political with the former director. And, uh, you know, it just had to be what it had to be. But I think when you start bringing in those politics dynamics, um, I, I'm not sure how many veterans will sup, you know, like, I always think, okay, well, how many veterans are supporting that one individual if there's no documentation or resolutions to support that decision? So, um, I know that's a very hard, it's very challenging to do here on Navajo Nation. I know one of my colleagues had asked US sponsor to go to all one hundred and ten CVOs? Like, that's really impossible, um, unless we want to be here for three years, you know, just go into every CVO meeting. And I do like that the plan of operation will identify a scheduled meeting, because I also think that's important. Although things may come up in the community, it's not just, okay, when can we all meet? Like, there has to be purpose in the meeting to move forward. So thank you, um, Shaj, I know you took a lot of time and energy on this legislation. You know, changing anything in the Veterans Act is probably one of the most challenging areas of the legislative process. So, um, I, I commend you and your team and Ms. Benali, uh, for showing up and, um, you know, hearing some of the opposition, hearing some of the suggestions, and being able to envision what that looks like. And I believe if we, if we get the veterans the type of advocacy that they need from leadership, we'll, we'll then be able to, to draw on the Advisory Council, CVOs and AVOs, to do the work that we have to do to get them that support right now. Like, so hopefully we'll get to the point that they, that they, that their needs are getting met in the way they need it. So, um, then as delegates, um, then we could focus some work on other, um, areas that need our attention, um, you know, like the violence part, you know, all of these other parts. Because I, I believe the veterans should already have that type of respect from leadership. So I appreciate, um, our veterans who are here today. Uh, I think it's coming out of pocket. We'll, we'll start doing food stands together. But, um, we have to get, so I always say, we have to get this right. Because if we can't get this right, then everything else is, everything else, there's an issue here. This is just the tip of the iceberg. And if we can't get this right, then how are we getting other areas, um, that our nation needs right? Thank you.
Akoshin, Akia. So let me address the comments here, the questions, and then I'll give it over to First Sergeant Lewis, who is a retired devil dog. So, real quick, so on the amendments, I did mention getting those before the Advisory Council. Again, I appreciate all the comments, some of the information that's coming in to me. And that's always good, because oftentimes, I think what I've learned, one of the things that I've learned in this capacity is, you know, sometimes you introduce something that you feel is very beneficial, and then oftentimes through discussion, through input, you start to recognize that some things may have been not necessarily stated, or maybe just needs more clarity, or there's something that you forgot. So it's, it's a moving dynamic here, and it's just, I appreciate those comments. And then just moving, just myself as well, you know, taking the initiative and working with my team to be able to go out and produce those forms of amendments. So I do want to comment on your page seven of 10, and I believe it was, I don't want to mistake this, but it did come up during Nabi. And my response was that, you know, it wasn't necessarily like literally saying those that live on Navajo, because I understand, you know, maybe the nation is not, not for everyone. They want to live off nation, right? And we shouldn't, you know, penalize them for anything, you know. It's, it's really at the discretion to live in these urban spaces. But we do have a lot of relatives and veterans who also come back. They contribute in some way to the veteran organization. They come back in October. So this, of course, and even through the Veterans Trust Fund, you know, you can't deny any veteran. And so this one here, although it says "Living on the Nation," it is inclusive of all veterans. And so I wanted to clarify that. I also acknowledged the additional parentheses that I see there. And through the communication, so currently, I know even through HES, we've often identified through some of the previous work sessions and presentations, reports that we've heard from the Advisory Council, is there's always a gap in communication. And through this legislation, we hope to strengthen that gap through the communication portion, meaning that if the Advisory Council is producing these written reports, if INNVA is producing these written reports, this legislation assures that CBOs and AVOs are part of that discussion. Because oftentimes, there's something that's produced in, you know, a written report, or something that's stated through, an initiative through HES or even through NABI. And sometimes that needs to be inclusive of our AVOs and CBOs when it's really not the case. And so that's where the strengthening of the communication is, is to create that conduit to ensure, and we have that right as well, to say, hey, you know, Commander Lewis here for the Advisory Council, you know, you're presenting this, did you go out, you know, is it inclusive of all your 27 veterans with, or 27, 26, I don't know, it's kind of an interesting one there, Fort Defiance? I'm like, well, they include Rock Springs, so we say 27, but it's 26 in reference, so, I don't know. I won't debate that part. But those types of things, those types of questions are on us now, and the onus is on us if enacted. And so on the DOJ, so part of the amendment that came up was because we did get a question from one of our AVOs, and I believe it was Northern, about how we were going to manage plan of operations. And we didn't want anything that was completely left field. And I think it came up on council floor, was like, okay, well, if stipends, if the local CBO says, "Oh, we're going to do $500 in stipends," then we have to afford that. And so again, we didn't want to put too much complexities, just because we want our AVOs and CBOs to have a much broader understanding of how they want to operate within their confines of an AVO and CBO. And so that's why the proposed amendment would be, "All plans of operations shall contain reasonable provisions and conform to Navajo Nation norms." So like 500, that's, that's, we would have to allocate funding for that. But how do we put something in place then where they would be able to consider? And that's something that I can take back to potentially the consideration of DOJ providing a template. So many of you, if you recall, we did pass a legislation to allow chapters to conduct virtual meetings. And then there was an accompanying template of what the policies and procedures would look like for these chapters who wanted to pursue that opportunity. And so maybe that's something that we also take into consideration and see what can be produced so that, you know, CBOs are not indicating something that is not, you know, or that is not outside Navajo Nation norms. So that can definitely take place. And then also on the in-person, I understand, you know, we all have personal lives, things come up, and that may prevent us from participating in certain meetings. So I also noted that here to take that into consideration. So hopefully it addresses all the questions as well as the additional comments. But at this time, I do want to introduce the Fort Defiance Agency Commander as well, and First Sergeant here, and allow him to introduce himself and just kind of share information as it pertained to the reports and everything that is expected of the Veterans Advisory Council.
Akia, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. Thank you all for really taking a look at the veterans, I appreciate it. From Standing Horse, just south of Delcon. Retired from the Marine Corps two years ago. Spent 21 years from 17 till 38, so I'm a retired Marine veteran. I probably spent more time overseas than I have living on, living back home. So I'm glad to be representing my, my, my veterans here. I'm also the Delcon Veterans Commander, so the grassroots level, the Delcon Veterans Commander, you know, and I got voted in to become the Fort Defiance Agency Commander, and then now is the Navajo Nation Advisory Council. So thank you for allowing me to, 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 to represent them. And one thing I've heard from, from a lot of the older veterans, they talk about, they've been fighting for this for a long time, like, they've been, they've been trying to get this for a long time. And we want to get it right. I understand we want to get it right. And I appreciate our veterans who were in there, getting the fight, and trying to recognize us by law. And it's our responsibility, I believe now, to continue to, to represent them and, you know, tell them that, no, now you can rest, now it's our fight, we, we got this. So thank you for all our, all our veterans, our surviving spouses, our Gold Star parents out there, who are continuing to represent us at the CBO level. So one thing I wanted to mention was our Advisory Council. Our Advisory Council is comprised of our two commanders per agency. So we were voted in, so you have a male commander, and then you have your female commander. For, and that's what comprises your 110 chapters at the advisory level. And that's what we represent. So that's our advisory level, what we represent, and who we, who we represent from the five agencies. And I also wanted to just talk about, just, I know we talk a lot about the Veteran Trust Fund, we talk a lot about the funding and the money, and I represent, I know that's very important to a lot of our veterans. But these meetings are, for me, coming back home and readapting into society again, getting to know, I, I think I get along better with my veterans, you know, my Vietnam veterans, my Korean veterans, those are my brothers, my sisters, I get along better with them than probably some of my own family. So it becomes a brotherhood and a sisterhood. We may, even when we ran out of money back in June, we still continue to have our meetings July, August, September. We still continue to have potlucks, we still continue to have meetings together, because we wanted that camaraderie, because that's what we miss. You know, that's when they can tease each other, make fun of each other. That's what it's about, I believe. That's the direction I want. The feet, the funding and everything else is, is great, and I appreciate that. But we need to maintain our CBOs and reintegrate our younger veterans who are getting out of the military. You know, we look at a demographic, some of the most, of, the most loneliest people in the world is 17 to 30, I believe. And then they join the military and they find that brotherhood, that sisterhood for four years, and then they get out. They should be welcomed back into our communities with our CBOs and back, back right there. And that's how we prevent a lot of our trauma, our PTSD, by, by making sure they feel welcome. And that's, that's what we're trying to, trying to establish. And it's our responsibility, because we're not competing with nobody, we don't have a deadline. I want my sons and my daughters to come back to a CBO, because they grew up on a military base, you ask them what they want to do, they're going to say, "I'm going to join the Marines, Dad." I'm like, "I don't, I don't know, but whatever you want to do, I got you." But when they get out, you know, 15, 20 years from now, I want them to feel welcome in this. I want to be a part of it to, 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 I want them to feel like, okay, I can go home and join my chapter veterans organization, I feel welcome there, I feel safe there, and that's where I want to be at. And it's networking. So that's, that's, that's the foresight, and, and I think this is a stepping stone to it. But this is not going to have the 100% answer. This ain't going to be the 100% solution, we know that. We're going to be, things are going to change five years from now, 10 years from now, but we're playing that infinite game. And we're looking at our grandchildren, our great, great, great grandchildren's in what we established here today with our veterans organization. So that, I just wanted to mention that, and that's kind of the foresight I see. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of our policies have got to be updated, a lot of them are signed in 2016, so we have a lot of work to do. We can't kick this down the road again. We got to put our heads down and, and fight for this. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak here, and I appreciate the opportunity to be welcomed home. And, and thank you to all our veterans, and welcome home to our Vietnam veterans and our, our surviving spouses. They play a huge role in this. A lot of times, a lot of our, our, our quorum is surviving spouses. They're the ones cooking for us, they're the ones, you know, welcoming us in those, those meetings. So thank you to them, and thank you to our Gold Star parents. And, and thank you all for allowing me to speak here today. And I'm, I'm very, very fortunate and very blessed to be, be home and be amongst you all. So, Akia, thank you.
Thank you, Commander Lewis, and again, colleagues, again, for your questions, your comments, your recommendations. And if there's anything additional before I share my closing comments, I will wait on that. Thank you.
And thank you, Delegate Doctor Endeness, and going back for any follow-up questions? Chair Karadi, Delegate Yaasi? Okay, then we'll go back to Delegate Ness, any closing thoughts or underdirection of your legislation? I know that I did get some text messages from some of our colleagues on when you plan to move this legislation forward. Are we anticipating for fall session, or what, what is your timeline looking like?
Our surviving spouses and our Gold Star parents. Proposed amendments, we've heard some clarifications that need to be established. We've learned some of the additional concerns as well. There's a lot to discuss on behalf of our veterans, and, and we hear it all the time. When we go to our CBOs and our AVO meetings, there's still a lot to discuss. And a lot of our veterans feel that they are unheard as an individual, as an organization, and as a body, and that's what this legislation is aiming to at least take a step towards. And, you know, Commander Lewis said it here, that, you know, it may not resolve everything. And I think that's something that we also have to keep in mind. And, but moving forward, it is a step in the right direction. Because by law, through the Navajo Nation government, we'd be recognizing our AVOs and CBOs. And many of them, you know, they want to be able to be in positions, be a part of organizations that allow them to strengthen their advocacy, their relationship, and, you know, what they have at a local level, but also as a regional level. And being able to understand those complexities as it relates to their time of service, regardless of branch. I've been a part of several meetings and I've caught on that, you know, they like to tease each other regarding different dynamics within their own respective AVOs and CBOs. But also understanding the disability as well of many of our veterans. I, I've been very supportive of working to establish counseling services within the INNVA, because I know things happen overseas while on tour, while on active duty that, you know, unfortunately impact a lot of our veterans physically, mentally, spiritually. And a lot of them do get disability and compensation, which, you know, I feel shouldn't be part of their income, because, you know, some things are just beyond our control. And, you know, I always say that, I've learned a thing or two from my siblings who have served in the military, who are veterans. But I don't think there was ever a day where they shared everything. And so I'll never understand what that, what that's like. But as a sibling, as a relative, this is just an avenue to be able to assure that we are, you know, being very open to the things that they go through. And being in the Navajo Nation law, that recognition expands beyond me, it expands beyond this governing body. But it's inclusive of all programs, division, and other tribal nations as well, to know that the Navajo Nation does recognize and is committed to ensuring the longevity of their CBOs and their AVOs. Because as Commander mentioned, this is an opportunity for them to strengthen, to build camaraderie. And again, we may never understand that as civilians, but allowing that opportunity for them to be able to expand on those services, on those needs, and getting that to their respective parties to get that support is really the drive of this legislation. And, you know, for myself to continue to be educated, again, you know, that's why I attend our local CBOs and AVO meetings. But it's not only through veterans, it's other populations as well. Being able to understand and how to best advocate for our veterans, for our disabled populations, for our LGBTQ community members, for many other populations. And, you know, this is that direction for myself, so there's still a lot for me to learn. But I've enjoyed advocating on behalf of this legislation, continued to be educated on it as well. And to answer Speaker's question, again, my, my goal is to ask Commander Lewis and the Advisory Council to meet on Friday, so that I can propose the legislation amendment that failed near NABI. If that is supported and passed, then it moves on to the Navajo Nation Fall Session. And that's when I plan to introduce it to the body. But I leave it up to my colleagues, if there's more recommendations, you know, I'll leave it up to the floor at that time. But it's something, again, that I feel is needed, long overdue. And as we continue to mold our best services and our advocacy on behalf of our veterans, then, you know, let's, let's move in that direction. You know, we have the federal government shutdown, we have our military personnel that are hindered, and, you know, having that in that are hindered, and, you know, having that in place, keeping those in mind, only improves that advocacy that's needed. So I appreciate my colleagues, also those that are online, our fellow com commanders, for traveling here to Windarok, my LDA, Ms. Benali, speaker, staff, and everyone for your ongoing commitment to learn and engage on our advocacy on behalf of our veterans. And again, to our veterans out there, I can't say it enough, thank you for your service, and I'm just doing the best I can to support you.
Thank you, Delegate Dr. Andy Ness, and I want to extend my appreciation to Chair Karadi and also Delegate Yasi. I know many of us, our colleagues are either back in their hometowns or somewhere else, because many of our travels are down just personally out of pocket, so... So, but thank you to those colleagues that are here with us in person, thank you Delegate Ness for having this very lengthy work session, but very good discussions, I think we have several action items that we have highlighted from this work session, so, again, colleagues, there are many follow-ups that we have reviewed, so at this time, if there is no objection, we can close the work session. And colleagues, we will adjourn our work session here at 1:26 PM, thank you.